And there it is. It is five thirty and we start our special September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Daniels, can you please lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I would be happy to if you could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. Secretary Spencer, can you please take roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Creo?
Here.
Commissioner Kofelt? Absent. Commissioner Daniels?
Here.
Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman? Commissioner Getzelman? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Montalve? Commissioner Montalve? I see her name on the list.
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Chair Mendoza?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Can you please inform the public how they can participate on today's hearing meeting?
Yes, thank you. We have additional instructions today. We're going to have interpretation services. Once the simultaneous interpretation function is turned on, only the person who will hear the, the only person who will be heard is the interpreter. And the interpretation services will require you to click on the interpretation icon that looks like globe. I'm gonna stop there for translation of some instructions.
Buenas tardes. Estamos presentando este taller y tenemos el servicio de interpretación simultánea. En este momento solo va a escuchar la voz del intérprete y puede por favor escoger en el icono de globo con su lenguaje de preferencia. Go ahead, back to you.
Thank you. So everyone must click on the interpretation icon and select your preferred language. Those wishing to use the interpretation services should click Spanish, which will then be on the list of options. There's also the English option. Once the simultaneous interpretation is turned on, you'll hear us speaking English in the background at about twenty percent volume and you'll hear the interpreter at about eighty percent volume over that.
Una vez que ustedes coja en el icono del lenguaje de su preferencia, usted va a escuchar también la voz del intérprete y en la parte posterior usted va a tener la opción del veinte por ciento del audio y usted puede escoger el lenguaje español si es el lenguaje de su preferencia. Back to you.
Thank you. You also have the option to mute the original audio if you only want to hear the Spanish interpretation and not the English discussion in the background. Everyone who doesn't want the Spanish interpretation should select the English function.
Usted también tendrá la oportunidad de poner o apagar el audio para no escuchar alrededor y también tiene la función de seleccionar solamente el idioma español. Back to you.
Thank you. So I believe we're going to turn off the interpretation services now. You'll be allowed to select the language.
Vamos a darle paso a que usted seleccione el lenguaje español o el de su preferencia y vamos a darle paso a que usted pueda escoger. Back to you.
I'm gonna give everyone a moment to select their language interpretation. Melissa, if you could turn that on? Or so please.
Vamos a darle la oportunidad lisa que pueda encender la habilidad de la interpretación en este momento. Back to you.
We're, I'm sorry, Spencer, we're still waiting on getting that up. One second. Oh, there it goes.
I see it now.
They, yes.
Okay, go ahead and select your language.
It may help if you kind of describe for people how they do it, so it's clear.
Yeah, that was the icon that looked like a globe. The interpretation service. And you click on that button using your Zoom platform. Select the. So can, can everyone hear the language they selected?
Mr. Spencer, there's, there's somebody speaking or noise on a phone ending zero eight seven. If they can mute, please mute that. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. That was gonna be my next set of instructions. Just want to make sure everyone had an opportunity to get into the language they prefer. And then we do ask that only staff and committee members have their videos on and everyone else have their videos off and remain muted during the meeting. This helps reduce distractions and helps with bandwidth. If you, if at the time you'd like to present, you can raise your hand using the raise icon, raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. It's under the reactions tab. It looks like a little hand. If you're on a phone, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star six. Oh, no, that's muting yourself. I apologize. You pressing star nine to raise and lower your hand. To mute and unmute yourself on a phone, press star six or use the little microphone on your Zoom platform to mute and unmute yourself. You can also participate by sending emails. We have a dedicated email. It's PChearingcomments at co.monterey.ca.us and we'll be monitoring that inbox in real time. So that concludes my instructions and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. This is a time set aside for public comment on items that are not on today's agenda. Please raise your hand if you have any comments. And Madam Clerk, if you can please check to make sure we don't have any room correspondence or emails on items that are not on today's agenda.
Good evening, Chair. There are no additional correspondence regarding anything not on today's agenda.
Thank you. This time for the ring consent for items not on today's agenda. Now we're gonna go to agenda additions, deletions, or corrections if we have any. Madam Clerk?
Yes, for the record, distributed via email was correspondence we received from the public for agenda item number four, PLN two one zero one five two Rio Vista Group LLC and agenda item number five, PLN two one zero zero three seven Barone. Also distributed via email today were two separate errata memos from staff for agenda item number five, PLN two one zero zero three seven Barone. Thank you.
Thank you. This is also time to decide for commissioner comments on items that are not on today's agenda. Don't see any. Now we go over to, to the Planet Commission referrals.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we do have some plans to bring forward some responses to some of the referrals, including having a presentation by the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for the later meeting in October. We also are working on bringing forward some revisions to the Planting Commission bylaws and that should be coming soon. We have a number of other items we're, we're working on and will be having updates for soon.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And now we go to item number two. I'm actually gonna do number, item two and three, which is the approval of the July twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting minutes and also the approval of the September fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission minutes. Commissioner Deal?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Montalve. I would like to second if we can revise that motion to include one correction of the July twenty-seventh meeting minutes. I was in attendance.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Deal and a second by Commissioner Montalve with the correction that she was present on that second meeting.
On the first meeting, July twenty-seventh. I was in attendance July twenty-seventh, not September fourteenth.
Okay, we can just please make that correction.
Chair, did you take public comment on the consent agenda?
I have not. We're gonna take public comment on the consent calendar at this time. I apologize. If there's any, please raise your hand and we can all check the emails if there's any. And I don't see any. Commissioner Roberts?
I just wanted to mention that in looking at those minutes, it does show that Commissioner Montalve was absent, but then it later shows just a couple sentences later that she joined the meeting. So I'm not sure there needs to be a correction.
Actually, I believe you are right. She was in the meeting and then she left and then she did join us afterwards. So I don't know if there is any correction needed there.
Actually, I was in attendance for the entire July twenty-seventh meeting. There was a different meeting that I attended late or that I attended from the beginning and then left and then returned. However, I do believe that these meeting minutes might have been taken after the September fourteenth meeting minutes for which I was absent and therefore maybe it was just a simple adding and removing and, you know, cutting and pasting and simply that was missed. When they said after the September fourteenth minutes were drafted and then it was used as a template for the July twenty-seventh meeting minutes. But I was in attendance for all of July twenty-seventh.
Commissioner Deal?
I think my hand was only up residually. Sorry.
No worries. Mr. Spencer, could you help us with that, please?
Yeah, you want roll call or do you want some direction on revision to the minutes?
Yes.
We can, we can amend the minutes to reflect Commissioner Montalve was present for that meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Could you please take a vote? We have a motion of Commissioner Deal?
Yes. As amended.
As amended.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Creo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kofelt? Absent. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montalve?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
And Chair Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And now we go to item number four, PLN two one zero one five two Rio Vista Group LLC. Staff, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Chair Mendoza and members of the board. Pointing commission, sorry. My name is Fiona Jensen. I am the project planner for PLN two one zero one five two Rio Vista Group LLC. The project is located at fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-seven Susan Street, Royal Oaks, within the North County area plan and the Paharo community area. The project is bounded by the Paharo River to the north, residential development to the west and south, and farmland in a county-owned storm water detention pond to the east. The project site is owned farmland, resource conservation, and high-density residential. This project was reviewed by the Planning Commission on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two at a special, in a special evening Planning Commission hearing on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. On March, on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Planning Commission continued the hearing to March sixteenth with direction to conduct more public outreach, to provide additional analysis on flooding, to include the traffic report in the attachments to the staff report, and to schedule a special evening meeting when the item returns. Two public outreach meetings have occurred since the February hearing. On March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Planning Commission continued the item to a date uncertain to allow staff to address flood elevation issues, liquefaction, safety and utility infrastructure, existing and proposed traffic conditions, and storm water drainage. Staff is now returning with a revised resolution addressing the raised concerns. As a reminder, the project includes construction of four sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six square foot two-story apartment buildings containing a total of sixty units for agriculture, workforce housing, two laundry facilities, one recreational room, and a manager's unit. A variance is required for the project because the proposal would exceed the maximum allowed building site coverage for farmland zoning district, five percent. As proposed, the project will result in a building site coverage of twenty-seven percent. Concerns relating to neighborhood character, safety, noticing, and water use have been previously addressed at the March sixteenth hearing. The following slides address public members and planning commission's concerns raised at the March sixteenth hearing. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, identifies land areas that are subject to flooding. Monterey County Code requires finished floors to be at least one foot above the specified flood insurance rate map flood depth. In this case, the property is located within FEMA Zone A O with a depth of one foot. Therefore, the finished floors of buildings A, B, C, and D must be constructed at least two feet above the highest existing grade or at a minimum elevation of thirty-three, thirty-three point two, thirty-two point seven, and thirty-two point six feet. The proposed project meets this requirement as all buildings are designed with a finished floor elevation of thirty-five and a half feet. In response to receiving updated Paharo River flood modeling data from the Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency during the project's environmental review period, the applicant has designed the finished floor elevations to exceed the hundred, estimated one hundred-year composite flood elevations of thirty-five point three to thirty-five point four feet. The one hundred-year composite flood elevations account for a hundred-year flood event as well as multiple levee overtopping scenarios. Within engineers prepared a storm drain analysis that studied the existing county-owned storm drain system, focused on the Susan Street pump station and county detention pond, and analyzed how the proposed project would impact the system. The property currently drains northwest towards the property located on Gonda Street. This is shown in the red arrows on the screen. The study recommended against the project continuing to drain west due to a lack of pump station at the Gonda Street outfall, the potential redevelopment of the adjacent parcel, which would significantly reduce areas, the area of flood capacity, and the reported flooding of the apartments west of Gonda Street. The storm drain analysis recommended three storm drain improvements. Construction of an eighteen-inch diameter storm drain along the property's southern boundary, expansion of the county storm water detention pond to increase capacity and reduce the lift station pump cycle time, and installation of a low-flow weir in the manhole at the intersection of San Juan Road and Susan Street to limit the volume of annual drainage routed to the county detention pond and pump station. The proposed project incorporates by design recommendations number one and two. The county's community services district that maintains the San Juan Road drainage system is aware of recommendation number three. The eighteen-inch storm drain pipe will be stubbed at the western property line to allow future development to extend this drain pipe to Gonda Street. This would allow Gonda Street to utilize the county's storm water facilities in the event that the Paharo River levels prevent drainage through the existing floodgate. Improvements to the county detention pond include excavating approximately eight thousand cubic yards, resulting in a bottom pond elevation of twenty-four feet. The excavated soils will be used as fill to raise the proposed buildings above the highest estimated flood elevation. Expansion of the detention pond will also increase the pond's capacity by four acre feet, which will allow for a greater volume of storm water runoff from the surrounding watershed to be detained and subsequently pumped across the Paharo levee via the county's drainage system. In order to change the direction of drainage and connect to the county's storm drain system, a series of gutters, drain inlet, and onsite re-treatment areas and retention basins are proposed. Once treated and retained, the runoff will be discharged into the neighboring county's storm water detention pond. These storm water control measures have been sized to provide onsite retention and reduce peak discharge to lessen pre-development conditions. At the March sixteenth Planning Commission hearing, members of the public raised concerns about the existing wastewater and water infrastructure and whether the proposed project would create infrastructure failures. The County of Monterey's Public Works Facility and Park Special District Division has confirmed that the proposed project will not increase the likelihood of such wastewater infrastructure failure. All past wastewater failures have been resolved and infrastructure improvements are in the works. Additionally, the Paharo Sunny Mesa Community Services District has stated that no waste, sorry, no water infrastructure failures have recently occurred and that the proposed project will not create a water infrastructure failure. It is estimated that Susan Street currently carries about four hundred daily trips, with two hundred and twenty being residential-related trips and one hundred and eighty being generated from the auto body shop located at the corner of San Juan Road and Susan Street. A standard apartment, the project would generate approximately four hundred and forty-six additional trips. However, the proposed project will only generate approximately one hundred and forty-five trips as agricultural employee housing, with eighteen trips in the morning peak hour of five to six AM and twenty-eight trips in the afternoon peak hour of two to three PM. The majority of the project-related trip generation will be outside of Susan Street's peak hour usage of seven to nine AM and four to six PM. Additionally, the generated traffic trips are within the estimated maximum range for a tertiary street, one thousand. With cars parked along Susan Street, there's a clear width of nineteen feet, which would allow two typical seven-foot-wide vehicles to pass at once. School buses, which will be used to transport the H two A workers, have a width of nine and a half feet. A school bus and a standard vehicle will be able to pass each other at once, while two school buses will only be able to pass each other when gaps in parked cars allow for additional space. This will effectively decrease speeds along Susan Street and is a common traffic calming practice called Yield Street. Left-turning buses will be able to exit and enter Susan Street to and from San Juan Road with no interference from other vehicles stopped on the Susan Street approach. Right turns from buses exiting Susan Street will proceed westbound on San Juan Road and will also be able to complete the turn without encroaching into oncoming traffic. Right turns from buses entering Susan Street will encroach about six feet into the southbound Susan Street approach lane. Based on the proposed peak hour trips, this scenario may occur up to three times between three to four AM and five to six AM and up to two times between two to three PM and four to five PM. After distribution of the September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission staff report, additional correspondence was received supporting and opposing the project. The comments opposing the project raise drainage, liquefaction, agriculture buffer, and conversion mitigation, safety, and water usage concerns. One public comment questioned the adequacy of the prepared mitigated negative declaration and stated that an environmental impact report is required based on the fair argument standard. Drainage concerns have been previously addressed in this presentation. A geotechnical report was prepared for the project and addresses the project's high liquefaction potential. The project engineer makes recommendations for foundation preparation and foundation design to mitigate further liquefaction potential. These recommendations have been applied as mitigation measure GO one and GO two and include engineered foundations and sub-excavation and recompaction of the upper five feet of soil. Monterey County Code requires a two-hundred-foot buffer between new development in excess of three units and adjacent agriculture properties. In this case, a two-hundred-foot buffer would severely limit the property's ability to develop. Agriculture Advisory Committee found that a one-hundred-foot buffer and a landscaping screening would provide adequate protection. The proposed project does not convert agricultural land to a non-agriculture use, as farm worker housing is considered an agriculture support facility. Additionally, the subject property's potential for development was considered in the two thousand and ten general plan E I R, which designated this area as part of the Paharo community plan. Therefore, mitigation for the conversion of agriculture to non-agriculture is not required. The applicant has prepared an emergency action plan, which details before, during, and after evacuation procedures, specific duties of tenants, transportation arrangements, and specific site plans illustrating the emergency exit routes and areas of refuge. To staff's knowledge, a local agriculture well serves multiple properties in this area, including the subject property. The initial study prepared for the project assumes water use of five point two acre-feet per year per acre for irrigation of celery, spinach, and Brussels sprouts, for a total of seventeen point nine acre-feet per year. This figure was based on information provided by Lakeside Organics, who has been farming the property and nearby properties for the last four years. The Monterey County Water Resources Agency has confirmed that five point two five acre-feet per year for a three crop rotation is within the range of other three crop rotation farm operations within the Paharo area. The neighboring property owner recently submitted water bills, which indicate an average of two point eight, three acre-feet per acre that is consumed across fifty-eight acres. The consumer, the, sorry, the commenter claims that the subject property is included in this acreage. The water bills do not break down the water usage by crop or rotation, and staff cannot find a direct correlation between this data and the historic water use for this property provided by the applicant and the current agriculture operator. Finally, based on all the information in the record, staff finds that there's no substantial evidence to support a fair argument that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. An initial study with the intent to adopt a mitigated negative decoration was circulated from December twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-one to January twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two. The initial study identified potential impacts to biological resources, geology and soil, hydrology and water quality, noise, utilities and service systems, and tribal cultural resources. Revisions to the initial study have been made following the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission hearing. Revisions were required to modify and clarify and amplify the analysis and to reflect the change in project addressing flood elevation. In response to the comments provided by the Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency, the proposed project was slightly changed to include raising the finished floors by an elevation of two and a half feet from the original proposal. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to deepen the county's storm water detention pond and use the excavated soils as fill material onsite. These changes triggered minor additions like retaining walls, ramps, and stairs to accommodate the transition between the ground level and the building's finished floor elevation. In response to traffic-related concerns, the project traffic engineer conducted a second twenty-four-hour traffic count at an agricultural worker housing project in Greed Field, California, to provide additional data to determine daily trip generation totals and hourly variations. Mitigation measure Bio Two required some middle of a spring survey to determine whether Monterey spine flower was present on the site. After circulation of the initial study, Denise Duffy and Associates conducted the required spring survey and confirmed that the species does not exist on the property. Therefore, mitigation measure Bio Two has been removed from consideration. These changes would not result in any new significant impacts or substantially increase the severity of impacts previously identified in the initial study mitigated negative decoration and service clarification to the document. In conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a mitigated negative decoration, approve a use permit to allow construction of four agriculture employee housing buildings that will accommodate up to four hundred and eighty employees, approve a variance to increase the building site coverage from five percent to twenty-seven percent, and adopt a mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Don't see any. He has raised. Okay, now we'll go to the applicant. Remember the way they can do their presentation?
Wonderful. This is Catherine. I'm sharing my screen now.
And before Catherine, before you start, just for clarity of speakers, Chairman Doza, do you want to set a time for the presentations of the applicant and then the public?
Yes, I think on the public, we're actually going to go with a two minutes. And as far as the applicant, you know, if we can keep it under five minutes, that would be great. Yeah, so I think we'll do that. We'll do five minutes for the applicant and then we'll do two minutes for the public.
Thank you.
Sounds like a plan. Chairman Doza, just let me know when you'd like me to start.
Catherine, you can start now.
Great, thank you. Chairman Doza, Planning Commissioners, people of the general public who are here with us tonight, thank you all for taking the time. We appreciate it. Now everyone's very busy. So Fiona did a wonderful job just now and will allow me to truncate this presentation a lot and I hope it sticks to that five minutes. So on the applicant side, we have two goals tonight, provide a quick overview of the project and provide further information on the topics raised during the previous Planning Commission meetings. And with that, our objective tonight is to have a vote on this project by the end of the Planning Commission meeting. I won't belabor this point. Fiona hit on most of these major topics before, and I'll jump through a few now. Some of the hotter topics perhaps. Get down to, let's see here, go over traffic once more. I know that that's an important one for the commissioners as well as the general public. So as mentioned, an additional study was conducted at the Greenfield Agricultural Housing Site, which happens to be the same size as the one proposed here on Susan Street. So that study concluded that our estimates were very close the first time around and just gave us some slight revisions to tune up those numbers. We found that the results of that study were within one, one and a half trips per hour to the original estimates presented during our first presentation last time. During the last hearing, we were also asked to provide a breakdown of how much traffic is currently being generated on Susan Street by the body shop versus the residents of the street that live in those homes. So that was provided in the report. The breakdowns here, it looks like the body shop is about forty-five percent of the overall totals for reference. As Fiona mentioned, this is a street that can accommodate buses as well as the normal vehicle traffic of the neighborhood. The buses will have to yield to each other if two buses pass at the same time, but a bus and a passenger car should be able to pass without problem at a reduced speed to keep everyone safe. Also as mentioned, an emergency egress plan was prepared by the operator of the site. So that egress plan is here and this plan, along with a lot of other documentation and information that goes into it, will be presented at the onboarding training for the workers to make sure that they're informed on a regular basis of the expectations in case an emergency occurs. Once again, Fiona did a great job. She's explained to you the additional projects that will be conducted as part of this housing project, including improvements to the pond, as well as a storm drain extension for future use by the Nicola parcel. So in summary, the neighborhood has some great benefits by those storm drains improvements. They get a bigger pond, which will help with the operations and maintenance of the pumps at the pond and as well as that storm drain extension and improvements in drainage towards Gonda Street. Another hot topic I'll just hit on real quick, liquefaction has been a concern in the public comments. So I'd like to reassure everyone that our soils engineer and civil engineer have been working closely on this topic and have reviewed it multiple times. At the bottom of my slide here, you'll see a small diagram explaining that we'll prepare the soil in multiple layers along with introducing various materials like fabric or base rock. And this provides a reinforced subgrade and will help create that non-liquefiable crust, if you will, towards the surface. Liquefaction happens when you have loose sandy soil that becomes saturated with water and you have vibration. So by removing the loose component, we remove that liquefaction risk. So in brief, that's how that works. In summary, I think we've hit on all the concerns we were asked to address last time. I know staff has been working very hard to make sure those are addressed as well. So if you have any further questions, I'm happy to take them, but I also want to respect the time limit that Chairman Doza has laid out for us.
Thank you, Catherine. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the representative? Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead with your presentation, but I do have a request to, our agricultural commissioner, Andrew Gonzalez, is present and would like to say something at the appropriate time.
Okay. Well, let's wait to see if the commissioners have any questions with the representative, and then at that point, we'll move over to him. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, Mr. Spencer.
Okay. So I believe.
For the question, who's the commissioner? I don't see any commissioner.
I'm sorry.
I don't think that's him. But, oh, there he is. All right.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. So I serve as agricultural commissioner for the County of Monterey, and one of my major responsibilities is to ensure that pesticides are used as safe as possible and according to all the laws and regulations. With that in mind, our office initially recommended a one-hundred-foot buffer with a vegetative buffer, including trees. And this recommendation was based on the twenty-ten Monterey County General Plan Policy Number A G dash one-point-two, which establishes for agricultural buffers, taking into consideration, among other factors, site conditions and the foreseeable future of agricultural operations. Currently, the adjacent agriculture is organic. Our office was recently contacted by the neighboring agricultural property owners, and they have objected to the proposed one-hundred-foot buffer not being a sufficient width to protect their farming operation. While the current operation is organic, they informed us that they're, of their intention to grow conventionally, that this is the foreseeable future of their operation. And so this new information that they plan to convert from organic to conventional is new information to us, and so we must withdraw our original recommendation of a one-hundred-foot buffer with a vegetative screen to a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer with a vegetative screen. This should provide additional protection from pesticide drift. As you know, probably know, organic and conventional agriculture both use pesticides, but conventional pesticide generally uses pesticides of higher toxicity and a larger array of pesticides and with greater possibility of pesticide drift. And so this is why we're changing our original recommendation based on this new information. I'd be happy to take any questions if they're maybe. Thank you.
Commissioner Deal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. I really appreciate you being here to help us understand this issue. Couple of things. First off, I'd like to put in a word to your office, Commissioner, that unless property is deed restricted to organic production, we should always assume that there's a potential for changing during the life of a project, which could be many, many years. So I think that any recommendation that you make, unless there is some sort of specific legal restriction on the property, should always do what you're doing now is to take into account that worst-case scenario for the safety of the people who are going to be living there. So I really appreciate your thought, your participation here and your clarity on that. I said, my question is really for staff, which is that given there is a general plan recommendation, or is it a policy for the two-hundred feet? Is, how do we normally assure equity here? Do we need to adopt the specific findings if it's less than, if we're proposing a buffer of less than two-hundred feet or of other things like vegetation that are restricted? Or do we, is that just simply adopted on a recommendation from the professionals? Technically, what would we need to do if we were to adopt a lesser buffer for the purposes of protecting residents from potential pesticide drift?
The twenty-ten General Plan does not establish a buffer requirement, but Title twenty-one of Monterey County Code does. I'm happy to share that code language with you, but for development adjacent to farmland, in this case, zone districts, the buffer shall be two-hundred feet or wider. And the twenty-ten General Plan allows for that to be at the discretion and discussion between the ag commissioner's office through the Agriculture Advisory Committee. In this case, staff does find that the proposed development is better meets the goals and policies of the twenty-ten General Plan with the proposed one-hundred-foot buffer.
Through the chair, may I follow up?
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. That's interesting, but the, if Title twenty-one says two-hundred or more, the discretion it's describing would appear to me to be related to the more and not the less. How do we, how do we bring together that requirement in our code with discretion to do less the way that you've described it? I don't understand that, and I'm concerned that we do the same kinds of appropriate, safe things for everyone.
Yeah, so if I might, I'll share the agricultural policy from the two-thousand-and-ten General Plan. And then as I do that, just explain that in, in the zoning ordinance, the inland zoning ordinance, Title twenty-one of the Monterey County Code, which in the hierarchy of regulations is under the General Plan. So the General Plan trumps. They're based on the nineteen-eighty-two General Plan. There was a two-hundred-foot buffer requirement. And in two-thousand-and-ten and adopting the agricultural element, there's specific language about agricultural buffers that the zoning ordinance has been, not been updated to reflect the new two-thousand-and-ten General Plan language at this point. So we apply the two-thousand-and-ten General Plan language to agricultural buffer requirements, and it is on your screen here. So the criteria used to establish the buffer include the type of non-agricultural use proposed, in this case, agricultural employee housing, site conditions, and anticipated agricultural practices, weather patterns, crop types, machinery and pesticide use, existence of topographical features, trees and shrubs, and possible development of landscape berms to separate non-agricultural uses from existing agricultural uses. It doesn't provide any specific size, and it doesn't say exactly that any specific findings need to be made, other than we have to require a well-defined buffer. And so we do that in coordination with Agricultural Commissioner's Office and the Ag Advisory Committee. The Ag Advisory Committee or Agricultural Advisory Committee is specifically listed as reviewing and making recommendations on the establishment and changes to those buffer zones. So we did go to the Agricultural Advisory Committee and got a recommendation from them that recommendation is, has been put forward in your packet in your staff report. The, that doesn't necessarily align with the comments of the agricultural commissioner that have just been made. But we do, we did, we did have discussions at some point in the past, and I think what the commissioner is saying is the crop types next door weren't well-understood. And so there's a desire to see a greater buffer.
Through the chair, if I might.
Please.
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to say here, as we move forward, that when we're talking about creating structures that are permanent, we can always talk about reduction in the established buffer size. That would be possible, but there's no way to increase the buffer size. So in terms of what we take from that recommendation, appreciate the flexibility of it, and some of it's coming back to me in the general plan conversation, I must say. And would also say that since there is no opportunity to increase a buffer, should conditions like the crop, particular crops and particular needs change? We need to be mindful of the largest that buffer that might be required, given the available options for use. And so I'm really appreciating the Commissioner Gonzalez in making that a possibility so that we are considering what could really happen in the life of these buildings. So mostly just thank you very much. I really appreciate the clarity on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, I was just actually hoping that staff could provide an image of the area that we're talking about, and so we can see in the schematic of what the development is going to look like, what the current proposal is for a buffer, just to get a better understanding. So, so there's.
Dash the line is the hundred-foot buffer, and the second dash would be the two-hundred-foot buffer. The dip in the buffers would be because of the county detention pond.
Ms. Jensen, if you could just walk me through that one more time, I'm sorry.
Sure, no worries. The buffers are based off of the adjacent property line, being this black dotted line here. The first purple dashed line shown along here is the hundred-foot ag buffer. This second is the two-hundred-foot buffer, and you'll notice that there are a dip in these buffers, and that is because of this triangle-shaped parcel, which is occupied and utilized as a county detention pond. And that is currently not agriculture land, which is why the buffer would decrease in that area.
So if you could point out to me then exactly where the agriculture is? Okay, over there.
Would be this property as well as this neighboring one down here.
Okay. So the ability to do, if you were to do the recommendation for a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, can you show me where that would go into? My guess is into the parking lot? And I'm sorry, I'm having trouble following this.
Midway between.
Something along.
So it's, the ability to have a hundred-foot, a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer is not possible?
Well, I think, I think.
Ability of development on this property.
There's, there's a, there's a component here that, that I'm sure the applicant would speak to if they were given the opportunity, but this, this, there was discussions with the Agriculture Advisory Committee and the Ag Commissioner's Office. And there, you know, there was a design prepared. And there, you know, there was a design prepared, there were a number of hearings. And it wasn't until, I suppose, just now that they were aware that there was this ask or request to increase the buffer. So it hasn't been designed to meet the 150-foot setback. You could, it would likely mean a lot fewer number of houses. And it would, it would take up the, you know, that half of, the front half of the property, front quarter of the property, I should say, where nothing could be, no, no units could be built. So there's one entire unit. And little less than half of another unit that would be in that 150-foot buffer as it's designed. But this would be news to the folks who have been designing and working on this project. And it also would be, you know, a situation that applies to the agricultural employee housing project that's not applied to all of the other houses along Susan Street, which are much closer than 100 or 150 feet to, to the existing agricultural use.
Perhaps if necessary, we could also then see a Google map or something, because it does look like it would impact the homes as well. But okay, that answers my question for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. Commissioner Roberts?
This is probably just more of a general question or question, since we have the ag commissioner here. I was curious, oh, leave that map up just for a second. That continuing on that same, just for my own general understanding, obviously, the parking lot is within the ag buffer, you know, either way. Or I don't know if this is for the ag commissioner or for county staff, if, what, why? I mean, obviously, housing is different because people are in it longer term, but I guess, why is the parking okay and not the housing?
I think that would be a question for the agricultural commissioner, but in the past, sort of temporary intermittent use of land within the buffer has been considered, where people aren't lingering or staying, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, so drift. Drift happens. And it can be a few inches, a few feet, a few hundred feet. And so we try to mitigate with, with buffers. We want to protect, of course, people primarily, as well as other sensitive sites. Although drifting onto somebody's cars that are parked in the driveway or or a parking place, although that would be a violation, it is not as as serious as drifting a pesticide onto people. So we can accept that the, the parking lot be part of a buffer, but it's, so we wouldn't want to have, for instance, a soccer field there where people would be playing. So we believe that that's, although still a a place where pesticides can drift, it's less of a concern. And in the interest of trying to have projects like this built, it's, it's something that we've allowed to happen, that there be a parking structure or parking space there.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. I also have a question for the ag commissioner. In reference to the buffers that we can bring up that map again, I would appreciate it that we're currently looking at. Thank you. Now, now, based on your, on your buffers here, you were saying that proper vegetation would allow you to reduce the distance of the 200-foot buffer. Is that pretty common, or that they use vegetation to address that, or how do you? How would that take care of the residue from whenever you have any, any types of chemicals being sprayed on some of these fields that are adjacent to the property?
Yes, it, it would not catch everything, but it would certainly catch much of the pesticides that could drift. Generally, the pesticides that drift, they are in particles, generally in some kind of water mixture. And they're, they're, they're very tiny, and they'll float in the air. And so the, the vegetative screen is done properly, and it would have to be eventually as tall as the, the structure or taller, and then cover underneath. So there would have to be multi-layer vegetation to, to catch the drift. Certainly, in the case of a, of a fumigant, a fumigate would go right through the, the buffer. So it does not eliminate everything. It just eliminates most things.
Okay, so you would say that a 200-foot buffer would be better in order to prevent, you know, any of the residents in that area from getting other pesticides close to them, for say, right?
The larger the buffer.
And then the other.
Pesticides have been known to drift two miles and more.
Wow.
And so we actually have a, a restricted materials permit condition. And we condition this on the growers that they cannot apply a particular pesticide within two miles of a vineyard once the, once bud break has occurred. Because the buds on a grapevine are very sensitive to this pesticide. And if the pesticide even, even could drift two miles, would still burn the, the buds, and then you would have no grape production at all, not to mention a lawsuit. But that's how far some of these pesticides can, can drift, and we know from experience that that has happened with this one particular pesticide. So pesticide based on their, their physical and chemical characteristics can drift different distances. There's many different factors that go into what causes drift, what moves drift. There's a lot of factors. So, you know, 200 feet is not much, I tell you. In other, in other cases, we have 500-foot buffers. In other cases, we have a quarter-mile buffers because of pesticide drift. We try to make it as safe as we can to try to avoid people becoming intoxicated with, with pesticides. And I'll tell you that it only takes five individuals expressing symptoms from pesticide exposure, and it can be eye irritation, it can be a cough, it can be a rash, it can be any symptom, if they have any symptom, five people, that is a priority incident that we refer to the district attorney. And when the district attorney looked at these cases, it becomes much more serious for the grower, and the district attorney generally arrives at settlements with the, with the growers that are usually in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for, for such a case. So we're trying to protect the people, we're trying to protect the growers' ability to farm without having to deal with these, with these issues that can, that can greatly impact their, their ability to, to continue farming.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. I appreciate it. Commissioner Carrillo?
Thank you, Chairman Dosa, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Gonzalez would be able to answer this. I know that this is, this came before the commission, before I was on here, and so it's been going, there's been lengthy discussions with the neighboring ag landowners and community. Is there a particular reason why we're the, we were finding out of this significant change at the last minute? And during this, I'm just trying to understand what, what happened here, then why are we just now hearing about the changes?
Yes, we only yesterday were invited by the grower to come visit the site, so we were able to see the site. There, there is no topographical anything between the, the, the project site and the ag there. And where we had conducted our evaluation of this project the first time initially, we believed that it would be organic, and we believed it would likely stay that way for the foreseeable future. But what we've seen is a phenomena where organic production has gone down. As a matter of fact, in our, in our annual crop report, we reported that there was 8,500 or so less acres of organic production in the county. So the move for, for growers has been to leave organic production because it's really hard to produce economically with organic methodologies. So they're going to conventional, and, and so when they let us know that they're going to conventional that, this being prime strawberry growing land there, if they were to grow strawberries, or lease their land for strawberries, they're going to fumigate with probably one, one, three dichloropropene and chloropicrin, which, which is a fumigan that has an ability to, to move. That's the material that'll go right through the screen. So the more we can have a buffer, the more we can protect the residents, in this case, the farm workers, but also protect agriculture. So we only found out this yesterday, and so this is why we're so late in notifying you. But I really felt compelled to speak up, even though I know it's not the best way. But to remain silent, I thought was, was, was not right.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. I appreciate it. And yes, you made the right decision. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Daniels?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I appreciate what Commissioner Gonzalez has shared with us, and I also really appreciate the comments that Commissioner Deal made first and, and early on, because I feel like this is, this situation, this is just more of a comment to staff that we should, we should always make sure that we are giving guidance to an applicant based on what the potential is for a site throughout the lifetime of a project, not based on what might be happening at a neighboring property at the time of the application. And so I, I think that it would be fair to allow the applicant to speak again after this information has been shared after their presentation. Because as far as I can remember, we didn't talk about this much during the original two hearings. And it wasn't, I mean, as a, as a sort of layperson, you know, it didn't occur to me that the decisions about the buffers that were presented and the assumption that the neighboring property would always be organic is something that I just assumed to be true. And so I don't remember any deep conversations regarding the, the, the length of the buffer. And, and so it looks as though the project has been designed based on the 100-foot buffer, and I don't know if that was if that was direction from the county that somehow that was acceptable because it was a, an, an organic farm. But I do think it would be fair to allow for the, for the applicant to comment again, even though their, their original presentation is over, because this is new information, and I don't even know if, whether or not they have something to say. But I think that would be the way to go if you agree, Chairman Dosa.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. I do agree with you, and this is basically new information for all of us. You know, we did not know about this. And you're exactly right, that property adjacent there that is currently being farmed organic, you know, it's just like, we can't look at these properties like they're always going to be organic. So I think Commissioner Gonzalez is basically making the right call. If he feels, if he does not feel comfortable making a recommendation based on what it currently is, you know, and now he's got new information himself, so it kind of puts Commissioner Gonzalez in a situation where, wait a minute, it's new information to him. So I think staying quiet would not have been the correct thing to do, whether there was a design that was done already or what have you. If he has new information, just like we do, whenever we get a project and we have new information before us, we have to take that into consideration before we make a recommendation. And I think that's the, the correct way of doing things. But yes, let's do that. Let's hear from the applicant with his new information and, and and hear what they choose to do, you know, with the new information before, say, they, if they wish to proceed, or if they wish to redesign the project, or where would they like to go with it? I think they can answer that for us. Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and we do appreciate this discussion because it is an important topic, and don't want to sound. So we have, we have had discussions with the agricultural commissioner's office in the past. We do have a recommendation from the ag advisory committee that has not changed. And we do, we have a neighboring property in the Miller Ranch that is in opposition to this project and has an application for a different project in very close proximity to their cultural land that we're talking about. So I just wanted to put that on the table, and I'd be happy to close my mouth now and let the applicant speak.
Okay, Mr. Spencer?
Hi there, this is Catherine again. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So a little on the spot with this one. This is obviously new information to us all. It's not, not that timely. Like to point out that the agricultural advisory committee met in January of 2021. So this does feel like very late information. Again, would like to echo Craig's statement that the folks that farm that land are also in opposition to this project. So the timing of this is a bit strange, but obviously, the interest of our residents is of top concern. So I would like to suggest that there are alternate mitigations aside from the 150-foot, the increase to 150 feet that might be considered maybe productive to have a discussion on those alternatives, which can allow the project to move forward as currently situated on the site, but still allow for the protection of the residents and the protection of the ongoing agricultural operations. So if I think of anything more, I might, might pipe in, but thinking on the spot, thank you.
Okay, is it appropriate, this is Mike Avila. I work with Catherine. Is it appropriate for me to add to that comment at all?
Mr. Avila will give you a few minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I am straining my brain a bit about the, the meetings that we had with the ag advisory committee. But as to my recollection, there was no restriction to organic farming for that area when that decision was made. That's, that's my recollection. We can check the record, but this, I don't think there is a change in the situation by this new information from a neighbor, from my recollection, and we are a bit on the spot. But I believe that is correct information, that the consideration was not clarified to say that there was, there was a condition that it had to be farmed organically. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avila. Okay. We're going to open it up to the comment, but before we do that, we're going to give the Parho Community Matters an opportunity to also do their presentation. Christine Shaw, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chair. Is that all? I'm sorry. It's funny, Christine. Um, is that also limited to five minutes or, or not? There was a limit on the.
Yes, it is absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Sorry.
Um, so at first I would, you know, thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I wanted, um, unfortunately, I'm going to ask if I can present my letter, but also, um, Karen Miller, the neighboring farmer, who is, uh, feeling unable to speak at this time in light of how the conversation has been going. Um, she is, you know, of advanced age. She's eighty. She's had, she just recovered from a month of COVID and she's not feeling that she can, um, she's feeling very nervous and doesn't want to read her letter right now. And I'm wondering if I can then present her letter for her after my letter.
Well, you have five minutes, so read fast.
Oh, just, just, just for both of those? For both of those, I have five minutes? No, no, uh, just to clarify. So do I have five minutes and then can I take Karen's five minutes? I think you're frozen. I lost you. Sorry. Hello?
I'm giving you five minutes to the bar. Hello?
Hello, yes.
Could you hear me?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna give you five minutes and then, uh, at that, then once we open it up for public comment, if you wish to, uh, take two minutes, that would be fine. So I think we can do it that way.
Um, would it be appropriate to, uh, have the other community members forfeit their comment time in favor of having one of our community representatives speak?
And I think that if we, if we start doing that, Christina, I, I just don't know how to gauge it. I think it's better that if we just give, you know, whoever chooses to speak their two minutes and then we'll just take it from there.
Okay, all right.
But I'm giving you five minutes to start now.
Okay, so it's gonna be a little, um, sorry. Okay, it's gonna be a little cobbled together then, because I would like to get some of this information in there. Um, first I wanted to make note though, that I was at the Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting, and the only, um, thing that was discussed about the buffer was the plants that were going to be in the buffer, not the width of the buffer. Um, the Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting also did not have access to technology. So the public and the, the committee did not see any presentation, uh, or any visuals. The, unfortunately, the drawings of the property were in a giant, they were not scaled to eight by ten paper. So it was this giant puzzle. Um, they also haven't contacted the Millers about, uh, this buffer at all. So quickly, I wanted to address something very important, the water, and this is from the Millers. "We disagree with the proposed agricultural water usage being more than urban usage. Our experience is that on the subject site, which is included in all fifty-eight point four-three acres, was one hundred and sixty-five point seven acre feet, which equals two point acre three feet per acre. In light of the current water crisis in Monterey County, saltwater intrusion, no long-term sustainable water supply plan and other areas of concern that were spoken about during the Board of Supervisors Regional Water Forum, it is of critical importance that we have accurate water usage numbers if we want to attempt to mitigate the impacts on our aquifers. At the end of this letter, which is provided in the record, uh, are the Lakeside Organics water bills for the year twenty twenty-one. Uh, Lakeside Organic Farm twenty acres, including the Rio Vista property. So you are privy to the exact water usage numbers, um, for that property because they received their water from the Millers." I wanted to talk about liquefaction. We are aware of the historical liquefaction that goes through the development site. The cell report states there does not appear to be a severe liquefaction hazard for this location. So then why was there so much liquefaction? We feel the applicant has not adequately addressed the liquefaction hazard at this location. With the maximum and singular boring depth of fifty-one point five feet at a location furthest from the river and not in the historic location of liquefaction slash channel complex, the deepest boring didn't fully explore the subsurface. If B one is the only deep bore and is not in the historic liquefaction zone channel complex, I question the adequacy of their drilling program and its ability to really illuminate the liquefaction hazard. Why is a sixteen foot borehole an adequate exploration of a channel complex that is likely thicker than sixteen feet? Settlement sand boils and small amounts of surface displacement towards the river channel were noted by folks conducting follow-up investigations in nineteen eighty-nine. Is this foundation design adequate to mitigate a differential displacement of six inches to one point five feet? On our farm, the Millers, at this, at the contact between the older Holocene floodplain deposits that did not liquefy and the channel deposit that did have liquefaction, we observed a scarp or break in slope that was six inches to two feet high. The effects were shown by surface manifestations of liquefaction that continued from our property through the development location, creating a belt of damage. How has the analysis addressed the presence of this channel complex that runs through the community? Additionally, the traffic report, um, I would wanted to say the application that is now before you was essentially the same one that was before you, March sixteenth, with no substantial changes. Paharo Community Matters has submitted for the record a thorough detailing of the various study shortcomings. Traffic, flood, safety, et cetera, are just a few areas of concern. While reviewing the application, I was surprised to see the inaccuracies and inconsistencies within the traffic report had not been rectified. I would like to direct you to page six of the Paharo Project PDF where we have detailed the traffic report shortcomings. The correct width of the street is still in question. They're stating that buses, um, can temporarily shift to allow passage to an oncoming bus or vehicle. Uh, please refer to the photo on page eight of the Power Project PDF for the following. Their solution proposes that buses can use gaps in on-street parking to shift into to allow vehicles to pass. Applicant is proposing that the residents of the development leave so early as to not impact the peak traffic period, but ignores that North County and Paharo's populace in particular is largely made up of farm and blue collar workers. Therefore, one could argue that they would be leaving during the same po- time period. Additionally, there is no time of day that there is a gap in on-street parking large enough to accommodate a bus. The crap, traffic counts were not repeated or based on assumptions and personal observations that were done during the pandemic, which I quote, "As a result, traffic activity throughout the county was significantly reduced from typical conditions precluding the usual collection of peak period traffic volumes at the four study intersections." Uh, they are, the traffic report states eastbound San Juan Road right turns to Susan Street will encroach into the southbound Susan Street approach. It is impossible for eastbound traffic to make a right-hand turn onto Susan Street. Their solution for westbound traffic is to block a very busy business's entrance, exit and park in a red zone, blocking Susan Street traffic's line of sight, oncoming westbound traffic, and therefore unable to exit the street safely. Thus further illustrating the inaccuracies within the traffic report. Please see photograph on page twelve of the Paharo Project PDF. To address the inadequate ingress and egress, I would like to point you to the safety element portion of the Monterey County, County General Plan. I understand that's under the fire jurisdiction. We acknowledge this is in regards to fire dangers, but in light of Paharo's documented history of flooding, catastrophic levee failure and liquefaction, it would not only be prudent but morally just to apply the same safeguards to developments in Paharo and other high-risk areas. While the applicant is deciding to do less than the bare minimum, minimum of keeping its residents safe in an emergency, with no means of evacuation, buildings only one foot above the outdated AO flood designation, the county has an opportunity to set a precedent of protecting its most vulnerable by making developers abide by current, if not law modeling, modeling that states buildings need to be raised three to five feet to resist being inundated during a flood. All right, I got four seconds. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, baby, Christine.
Thank you.
And we're gonna go over to Anthony.
Mr. Chair, can I interject just one thing real quick, please?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Roberts.
I just wanted to say to anybody who does want more time, we always accept written comment and please submit written, written comment, and those are always, it's on the record. So we're people reading letters and stuff like that, um, those will be on the record whether they're spoken or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Anthony, you have two minutes.
Hi, um, something that hasn't been brought up by the applicant or the ag commissioner is the prevailing winds, uh, in regards to the ag buffer. If I can share my screen, I don't know who allows me to do that. Throughout the year, the winds in the Paharo Valley blow from the south and the southwest. Um, still not allowing me to share my screen. Um, they never blow from the east, meaning that the winds would blow from the, uh, farmed land towards the proposed development. Here we go. So this is just a website, Wind Finder, and this is the wind direction by month for the Watsonville Airport, which is, uh, pretty close by. So throughout the year, you can see that the winds blow from the south, southwest. And, uh, I think that's an incredibly important distinction, uh, when considering these ag buffers uh, in regards to the general plan, not Title twenty-one, because the general plan is what we're working off of. Um, with no explicit distance, just working with buffers and how, how we mitigate it. Uh, but I think it's incredibly important to consider wind direction, historical wind direction, when taking into account these distances that, um, we're allowing. So I, I just want to put this in there, that the wind never blows towards those proposed buildings. Uh, so when we're talking about drift and things like that, um, I think we need to take weather and wind into account. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Hansen, you have two minutes.
Uh, hello? Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, um, I have basically two comments. The discussion that you've been having about the buffer and the impacts serves to highlight the requirement that this should be investigated and analyzed in an environmental impact report. The second thing I wish to tell you is that I have been doing California land use law for fifty years. I consider myself something of an expert in general plans. And in all that time, I've never heard the proposition that you could ignore a adopted zoning ordinance because the general plan had been amended. And therefore you could nullify the zoning ordinance and just go by the general plan. That is not true. And I would be happy to represent you, um, whoever wants to, um, sue the attorney for malpractice who suggested that that is the case. And I would ask the staff to put up on the screen Monterey County Zoning Code, Section two-one, point six-six, point oh-three-oh, F-two-A, which unequivocally, without exception, requires a two-hundred-foot buffer where the adjoining farmland has an F zoning, which this does. So, you know, I mean, you can go ahead and approve it if you want, but you're gonna get sued. It's totally illegal. All of those buildings are within that two-hundred-foot buffer. And you've heard of all the reasons why that is appropriate, given the proximity to farmland. And the notion that this project is appropriate for this site at this density.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. Uh, Stephen Snogras, you have two minutes.
Good evening. Uh, first off, my hat's off to all of you folks that are on the commission. Uh, you have a very thorny issue here that you need to address, and I certainly appreciate the amount of time you folks are putting into this. I would actually comment on this buffer issue that let's not impose a de facto restriction on the neighboring property, because that's, that's effectively a property rights issue. And while I'm not an attorney, I suspect it could be even considered a taking. And the, uh, the fact that we own, the, uh, it was only considered to be organic in the first place is sort of a major error in, uh, in assumption, because the Millers are well within their rights to change their method of farming bec- uh, to meet the current market conditions. And so let's not put a de facto restriction on their property, and let's make sure that the right thing is done here. And even though the right thing can be difficult, we should do, we should all endeavor to do the right thing. Just because it's difficult doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Elizabeth, you have two minutes.
Mr. Chair, before she begins, may I just offer a suggestion? I, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm assuming this is public comment on the entire project and not just buffers for everybody's clarity. Is that not correct?
That is correct. It's on everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Chairman Dosa and Monterey County Planning Commissioners, Elizabeth Madrigal, speaking on behalf of the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. We support the proposed project located at fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-five and fifty-seven Susan Street. Since twenty eighteen, MPP has been co-facilitating the implementation of our region's farmworker housing study and action plan. In twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, MPP convened several, several meetings with Monterey County staff and other stakeholders regarding the mapping of suitable sites for farmworker housing, both for fam- for families with children and unaccompanied H two A program workers. It was determined that H two A housing would be sited just outside of city boundaries, still within reasonable extension of critical infrastructure such as sanitation and water hookups. This project aligns with these determinations. The proposed Susan Street H two A project answers a critical need for agricultural workforce housing in our community and is designed to be easily converted to residential family units in the future if workforce needs change. The commission has an opportunity to expand access to housing for our essential agricultural workforce by recommending approval of this project. Thank you for your consideration and leadership.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak in reference to this project? Okay.
Yes, hello, hello?
Yeah, yes, I can hear you. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Very quickly, uh, I was speaking to a local, um, resident there on San Juan Road. This has not been addressed. She's an aging woman. Her husband was dying, and this just happened in the last two weeks. And her house was broken into. Um, it took an hour and a half with her on the phone with them, pointing a gun at this gentleman who was trying to get into her house for the sheriffs to arrive. Number one. Number two, an additional homeless person was living under her trees. Uh, and it took the sheriffs, the phone call, actually, I should, let me, let me backtrack. It took the, uh, the sheriffs to show up for that first incident for an hour and a half. They did arrest that gentleman. However, it terrified this poor woman whose husband was dying. Secondarily, um, the sheriffs never showed up when she called because they had, she found a person sleeping under her trees who had broken in through her fence, her gated fence, locked gated fence with his bicycle, put it to the side and decided to take a nap under her, her, her trees. Um, the sheriffs never even showed up. I don't think we've talked about the consideration of the potential for safety issues given these circumstances of the increased amount of people that are going to be here. And the lady that just spoke very quickly stated that this, this design to easily change to other housing than it originally was designed for, um, if need be. If we can't even get a sheriff's department out in an hour and a half's time or ever, when you call to say there's a, an intruder on your property, how are they going to be able to protect anybody around when we have such an amount? When we have such a, a, a small amount of, of, of sheriff's presence.
Thank you. Okay, we'll try that again. Sales iPhone, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sal Jimenez, former City of Salinas Planning Commissioner, former Salinas United Business Association President. Um, I'm calling today in support of the H two A program that is currently being proposed for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, as we all know, Monterey County is in dire need of every type of housing, affordable housing, multi-unit housing and so forth. So we cannot go and, and turn the blind eye on a dire need the Monterey County housing needs. Um, hearing through this project and seeing this project and being, um, witness to hearing the commissioners come forth and hearing all the, the pros and cons of this. I, I'm a little disappointed to hear the last minute, um, accusations of the buffers and cannot, cannot ignore seeing the general plan in place. And at the last second, at the last hour, a wrench is being thrown into this project. I feel the project is gonna be an important project, not only for affordable housing, housing for farm labor workers that is in dire need. I think our commissioners, in my opinion, um, need to clarify and see what the needs are of our community. And seeing that, uh, put some leadership out there. And seeing that, put some leadership out there and let every investor in Monterey County know that's doing, whether it's affordable housing, multi-unit housing, H2A, that we're open for business. We embrace and we want housing. Because as this young lady had said before here, there's people living on the streets. There's people that are looking for housing, and we see it every day. So I am hoping today that the leadership that you guys were put to is put to good use out there, and I'm confident that you guys will make a great decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vince, you have two minutes.
Yeah, hello. My name is Vince, and I live in 27 Susan Street. I would like to address the misconception and misdirection by the applicants, the representatives, that only engenders the further muddy, muddy, the waters hiding the true and serious issues that this abandonment will cost the community at large. An applicant who has resident, resident providing materials in Spanish, those including majority of the residents from being able to provide meaningful input, has now, has not welcomed community feedback unless tasked to do so by the planning commission and offered a top law. As a means, rightfully angry neighbors is an applicant who is doing anything worth being impressed over. The Ben Mayor and Flori point out in their book, Latino citizenships claiming and identifying space and rights. Second-class citizenship is all perceived in Latino communities that Latinos accepted their treatment in unbearable. During the planning commission hearing six, Roni Andrade made comments in regards to lawyers of city, their surroundings, their residents with, because they are vulnerable population that is often the target of nefarious persons. It leads to the ensuring firestorm among the neighbors. With most of our residents having lived here decades and longer, we are more than familiar with the lack of law enforcement presence in our community. With only the sheriff after hours for almost county, it is no wonder that was the face reaction to Mr. Andrade. A source that the population attracts those need to be protected from criminals. The community is not concerned about change and take offense to our valid concerns being conveniently minimized. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Margie Kay, you have two minutes.
Thank you. What I want to say is, is I was on the North County Coastal Land Use Advisory Committee, the coastal one, for seven years, and I made a point to see every site visit of every application that we got. And it's amazing how much you learn and see when you actually go to the site. So I'm hoping that every planning commissioner did go to Susan Street and drive down it and really take a look at the community, the San Juan Road and the ag property on the other side there, just so that you really understand the nature of this neighborhood. That's all I want to say. I hope you went and saw it. Thank you.
Thank you. Segredo Lopez, you have two minutes.
Okay, this is part two. Can you, everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and because it's obviously needs, so this is piggybacking on Vince, needs to be clarified. Yet again, we are not an anti-farmworker housing, we are not anti-development, we are not anti-farmworkers. I love the fact that housing, that it needs to be stated repeatedly as many are seemingly averse to acknowledging the demographics of the community is largely made up of farmworkers or ancestors of farmworkers. Those same people having seemingly bought into the smear campaign that is casting an impoverished Latino community as NIP wise. In addition, I want to address statements made by Monterey Bay Economic Partnership that are inaccurate in light of thoroughly reviewing the studies provided by the applicant. I wonder what qualifications the members have to critique geotechnical studies, stormwater control pens, and foundation systems to mitigate liquefaction, liquefaction hazards that would lead them to conclusions. So counter to what appraised a paid independent consultants. I lost my spot. Give me one second. Sorry, guys. Also, MPE has classifications that classify the construction of another development in Paharo level I'm on a said 16 Salinas Road. And while it is extremely out of scale with the surrounding community, it is at least podium-built.
You've heard more time.
Thank you.
She hasn't finished. She needs more time.
Okay, I'm going to go over to TISC. You have your hand raised. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Benjamin Tiscadeno. I'm a former City of Salinas Planning Commissioner back in the early 2000s. I've been following this project for a while and just want to put my, my my thoughts into the process and also what I feel is important. First of all, as a former planning commissioner, being surprised at the last second by concerns of other NG agencies is really a shock. You know, a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of time has been spent by the applicant, by professionals, as required by County of Monterey to suffice reports, studies, to justify and show that this project complies to all the requirements of Monterey County. And many meetings have probably gone through to make this happen. So that's one concern that I have. And it looks like on the, when the, the project planner proposed, I mean, stated at the beginning, all these have been complied to. And now at the last second, something comes up, and now we have this situation going on. So I have seen these models of these projects. There's one over in Veranda. There's one over in Davis Road. There's another one in Spreckles. And I've seen all these projects, and they look very, very, very good projects. They're well confined. There's a lot of landscaping that can improve the properties around the vicinity. So, so I know there's also concerns on the community. Okay, I'm sorry. Did I pass that? I'm sorry. So anyway, those are my.
Your two minutes. Would any other, anybody else like to speak on this project? Please raise your hand. We have anybody else? I don't see any, any hands. Do we have any emails? We have a correct correspondence on this project?
Hi, Chair. For the record, our office received a copy of the applicant's presentation, and that was distributed by email. Also, we would like to make sure that there's no members in the Spanish speaking room that would like to speak as well.
Okay. How do we do that? Would they raise their hand or?
I, yeah. I think they can raise their hand in the same fashion by using the reactions tab at the bottom of the screen or by pressing star. I always get them confused, star nine.
Well, let's give them a minute with that. We didn't lose anybody.
I, looking at our PC hearing comments inbox.
A group of comments. Yeah, and I just like Chairman does remind the public that the inbox for the comments isn't intended to be a chat feature. We did receive some comments that were more rhetorical in natured, weren't considered to be official comments. I just want to remind the public if they do have comments, that's, that's what that is for, and that we don't respond to them through a chat feature. Thank you.
I'm happy to share the three comments I see all from Christine Shaw.
Right, I did share Christine Shaw's last additional comment. But two prior to that, one was more of in regards to a public comment, another public comment. And then one was regarding the translation services, which I am checking to make sure it's still working throughout this meeting. And it seems to be working.
Well, they're short, so I can read them if the chair would like.
Yes, please, Mr. Spencer. That would be good.
First one says it states the buffer must.
Please, if there's any other.
I'm a resident in the Condes, Susan Street, and I would like to come back and to the notification for the people, the 70%, 75% of the people, they.
You can speak. You have two minutes. If you wish to speak, you have two minutes. You can do that. We would love to hear from you.
It seems to be unmute.
Francis Ayon, you've muted yourself. If you can unmute yourself, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Hello?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay, I wanted to say that 70% of the people, residents from Susan and Gonda, they didn't get any letters in time. And the people still get in, in order from being part of these meetings. These meetings shouldn't be taking place when the people not knowing what's going on. Unfortunately, through all this, from way back to the beginning, the people still very upset, but they.
Mr. Ayon, you're breaking up.
They don't want this project in our area. I don't know why they should. Trying to get it done when nobody wants them around there. Happen.
Mr. Ayon, you're breaking up. We can't hear you.
I'm finished, and we should be able to take it, take everybody in consideration instead of only a few people. They're all part of this, those, this two streets, and they did not.
Mr. Ayon, you're breaking up.
I don't know why I'm breaking up. It's just neat. I want you to know that everybody wants to be part of this meeting, but they don't get their letters in time. And they should be able to get their letters on time. And that way you can participate in every single meeting. They are against to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's check to see if we have anybody else that would just speak on this project. Carrie's iPad? You have two minutes? Carrie's iPad, you have two minutes. You're muted.
Yeah, my name is Ken Reiler. I'm a civil engineer. I've worked on Paharo River over 30 years, mostly at the Santa Clara Valley Water District. However, most recently, I worked with local community groups with the Corps of Engineers project. And I'd like to make reference to the local cooperation agreement that the county signed to enable the funding and the approval of the project. If you look into that, it speaks to flood evacuations and the situation in the town of Paharo, which does not have an emergency action plan. They point out that during floods, as in 1995, the whole area floods, becomes inaccessible. So until the flood control project comes along, putting additional people in that area puts them in severe jeopardy, especially at the project site. I've worked with Christine Shaw to look at this area and basically think this is a mistake. I've also discussed it with Santa Cruz County Flood Control Manager. So my view is a project is premature until the flood control project comes along. And at that time, I think the risk would be significantly reduced. So that is something we put in a letter with the local cooperation agreement. Based underlying in a few places, I would hope that you would look at that and consider it and appreciate that we've got about 20 years to convince the federal budget, Office of Management and Budget, to keep funding our project. And if you look at the local cooperation agreement, it basically speaks to the fact of not putting in inappropriate developments until a project is done. So I hope what you do does not jeopardize our future funding to get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you. Bustacio, you have two minutes.
Ah, sí, sí, podemos escucharlo. ¿Sí me puede escuchar? Ah, sí. Okay, buenas noches. Después de escuchar toda la información que hemos, mi nombre es Bustacio y soy residente de la calle Susan. Hemos escuchado cambios, nueva información que han traído los que están planeando el proyecto, pero también nueva información sobre nuevos riesgos que hay de la fumigación y todo eso. Algunos comisionados han venido aquí a nuestra área. Han mostrado números gráficas, pero nosotros estamos viendo diario para problemática, principalmente el tráfico. La calle que tenemos es, no es suficiente para, creemos para el proyecto tan grande que se está poniendo ahí, 480 personas, incluyendo bases entrando y saliendo por una calle tan pequeña, y uniéndole el problema del tráfico de la calle Susan. Eso sí es real. De la San Juan, perdón. Ese problema es real y lo estamos viendo nosotros los residentes. No nos imaginamos un proyecto tan grande triplicando, cuatriclando el tráfico aún más. Y pues, es la mayor preocupación, que creo que dicen que son trabajadores temporales, pero qué, 10 años, 15 años, que sean viviendas regulares, calles estaturales de tráfico. Tenemos los vecinos de la calle Gonda con carros todas las tardes arriba de las banquetas porque no hay lugar. Estamos sobrepoblados y es un plan, es un proyecto que creo que nos va a traer muchas complicaciones aquí en el área, principalmente de carros y tráfico. Gracias.
Do we have any other public comment?
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering when somebody speaks in Spanish, if somebody could translate for those of us that aren't fluent.
If I might answer that, Mr. Chair, there, there, there's the option to choose your language, um, using the translation thing that looks like a globe at, at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're participating by phone, that Zoom doesn't offer that function. Uh, but there was Spanish to English translation of that comment. I, I heard it on my end at least.
Correct. Christine Shaw, you have two minutes?
Oh, I already spoke. Sorry. I was just gonna say that, uh, I'm not looking to take advantage of another two minutes. I was just gonna say that translation is usually gibberish from Spanish to English. I've watched it while I've been listening and it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to say that the trend, the translate, I didn't get that translated. Um, the last meeting we had, it was translated over. Uh, this, I, I just have it in the original audio, which I guess is the problem. I, um, so I don't know if that was.
You would have to select English to hear that translation.
Oh, okay. If, if possible, I don't know how to do it, but I would like to hear, I mean, I could understand parts of it, but certainly not the full.
Maybe we can have him, uh, give him an opportunity again. Is that a good idea?
That would work for me and I can turn the, um, change it to English and make sure that.
Okay. Commissioner Dale?
Sorry, Chair, just to make sure that, as Craig mentioned, those that want to hear the translation at the bottom of the screen where it says translation, they'll need to click the appropriate English or Spanish.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say the same thing. Please make sure you have it clicked because I had a professional translation by the translator and it was in English and it was very clear. So I do make sure you've clicked the globe that says English and select the language.
All righty. Thank you.
I have a question. I, I, I guess we're gonna do this then, okay?
We are, yes, we are gonna do that. We're gonna give him. Bustacio? Podría repetir lo que dijo, gracias un momento? Don't know that we can.
That was our translator. I think she, she's hoping to, um, translate the request.
Me escuchan?
Chairman Mendoza.
Me escuchan? Sí, sí, lo escucho. Disculpe, lo que pasa es que es un problema de. Sí, puede empezar, tío, mientras te veo.
Ya, buenas noches. Este, mi nombre es Bustacio Cárdenas. Soy residente aquí de la calle Susan. Sobre comentarios de que por meses atrás hemos estado escuchando sobre los planes de la construcción que traen, información nueva y cambiada de, um, de cómo se van a quieren realizar el proyecto. Algunos comisionados, incluyendo usted, Presidente, lo hemos mirado que ha venido aquí personalmente a mirar el área. Tenemos un problema bien real que es así real. Ustedes ponen gráficas, números, cambian a, como se lo van pidiendo o como creen que está bien para presentar un proyecto bueno. Pero el problema lo estamos viviendo nosotros, los residentes ya. El tráfico, la calle es muy pequeña. Tenemos servicio de, de basura que cuando llega el troque no podemos salir a seguros si tener una precaución máxima para que el troque pueda pasar o un carro pueda pasar. Es un lado con la San Juan, es una calle muy transitada. No puedo imaginarme cuatrocientas ochenta personas viviendo ahí. Dicen que quizás son temporales, pero qué pasan diez, quince, veinte años que ya sean residentes regulares. Tenemos los vecinos de la zona, de la calle Gonda, que ahorita en la tarde las, los sidewalks, las banquetas están con los carros arriba de que no hay donde estacionarse. Creo que esa sobrepoblación de carros nos va a afectar aún mucho más de lo que ya tenemos. El problema lo solo, lo vimos todos los días porque es una calle pequeña que no sé cómo, cómo la visualiza para que sea una entrada como un drive-through para cuatrocientos ochenta personas que quieran vivir en la parte trasera de la calle. Eso es como mi principal, uh, preocupación que tengo yo como residente de aquí. Y al salir para la calle San Juan es un problema que tenemos nosotros residentes por la velocidad que se maneja en esa calle y para poder salir y entrar. Okay, gracias.
Gracias, Estacio. If we have any other public comment? Don't see anymore. Commissioner Roberts, was that better?
That was perfect. Thank you. And thank you to the speaker for repeating.
Perfect. Sorry about that, lost there for a minute. So I don't see any more hands. We're gonna bring it back. Uh, we're gonna give applicant an opportunity to respond. And we're also gonna give Christine Shaw as well. So we're gonna give both of them five minutes. Commissioner Daniels?
I'm wondering if I might be able to ask a question of staff and, um, just in case this comes up in their responses about the Paharo Levy project. Would, would that be okay to ask a question?
Yeah, I believe it would be.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, it's come up in the public comment and I just want to find out if staff has any, um, indication. It was definitely in the newspapers that this project was received state funding and federal funding. So is there, uh, a concern that, that this project is not funded? Is it fully funded at this point? Is it moving forward? I just wanna make sure that, that we have that information, if you have it, that this project is, is moving forward and it's not as vague as it may sound, if that's clear or unknown or uncertain.
This is Mike Avala. Can I speak to that?
Well, I asked the question through the chair. I just, I wanted to make sure to ask this question in advance of both the applicant and the respondents, just because I think that's a question that people might want to answer, but maybe staff has an answer first.
Um, so I am perhaps Fiona knows or Eric or someone, uh, but, uh, I'm not the expert on this. I get. I, uh, I do know that at least portion of the improvements are funded through federal and state grants. Um, I don't know if all of the levy improvements are funded. So there's different phases that include different reaches of the levy. Um, and I think at least one of those phases or, or the studying of the projects is funded. Uh, but I'm, I'm not the expert and I don't know for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna give the app public comment. You have five minutes.
We asking the applicant to go first or?
Yes, we're waiting for the applicant.
Okay.
Go first.
I, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, I can.
Sorry about that. Was talking to myself over here on mute. Um, so just wanna thank you all for your time. I don't think I'll need the entire five minutes. Um, like to say that the public comments that we've heard tonight echo those that came at previous meetings and have been well responded to by both our team as well as the fantastic staff, um, who've been working really hard on this project. So please just consider the positives of this project and rest on the fact that all of these, these topics have been well studied. Um, our community is in dire need of housing and this project addresses all of the major problems, flooding, liquefaction, traffic, um, all of those hot topics that the public commenters have brought up and will provide safe housing for our very important agricultural workforce. Um, it's the most responsible thing an employer can do in my mind to provide housing for their own workforce and is very admirable. So that helps the housing stock in the general area. Um, allows those employees to live in a site dedicated for their use, which is fantastic and is a quality, um, safe site. So just would like to, to close with those remarks and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to respond. Chairman Mendoza, if I might just, uh, add one more item, um, we would like to request that the planning commission does move forward with a vote tonight.
Okay, well, we'll definitely give it a whirl, try to do that. Christine Shaw, you have five minutes?
Hi, uh, thank you for this opportunity, um, to address some of the things that I heard brought up. Um, I wanted to address directly what Catherine just said and to consider that positive and looking at the positives does not mean to, that we should ignore proper, proper governmental oversight and safety measures. Just because something has good parts of it doesn't mean that we can just ignore and, you know, go ahead with it. That's fine. We're gonna plot four hundred and eighty people into a flood zone, only one foot above the outdated, you know, flood zone measurements and with a failing levy and it's fine, it's fine, it's good. Let's just do me a solid here. Let's, let's just do it. Um, I think that's really, uh, disturbing that instead of saying, you know what, you've brought some good, uh, information up and we really want to make sure that we, you know, dot, dot our i's, cross all our t's. I'm just hearing a lot of pushback about like, well, we really need this to happen right now. Well, what is the rush? We really need to make sure that we're keeping four hundred and eighty people safe. Um, this has gone beyond how this affects Susan Street. The true effects are on the community at large and the people in this development. I think that that's getting lost. Uh, it's, I really do consider it a smear campaign casting us as Nimbies. Um, when the reality is the, these, we're the same people. My mother worked in apricot sheds. My grandparents came over to work the fields. This is a Latino community of farm workers. It's not Nimbism. It's, these people are of equal value and you cannot plop them in a dangerous environment without the correct support infrastructure. And just say it's all good because, you know, they should have nice housing. Of course they should in the proper location. Um, if we really dig, I think we need to address, address the claims of unfairness by some of the public and former government workers in regards to the buffer issue being brought up this late in the game. You know, unfortunately, the lateness of this finding was directly due to the county and applicant silence. If they had reached out to the neighboring farmer that they share, you know, a common property line with about the buffer, as I believe they should have, that would be the right thing to do. Um, we would have seen this a lot earlier. As I said before, I was at the agricultural advisory committee meeting and this was not brought up. Hence why I was not even on anybody's radar. Uh, it might have been on the farmer's radar and they might have understood the importance of a buffer, but me as just a housewife, of course, I don't know that that's super important until I talk to, you know, the people who know about this. Uh, so that is directly a result of the county and the applicant. Um, you know, what else can I talk about? There's so much to address. I think that some of the people who spoke in favor of this project probably did not look into the, the records in Acela to truly see the mountains of evidence that the community and our consultants and lawyer have put forth. Um, of course, we're in favor of farm worker housing. We are farm workers. Of course, we're in favor of housing, but keep in mind, this is for workers on H two A visas. This is not going to alleviate, you know, the people who are living under the bridge. Uh, this is for workers that are gonna be bused from two to five AM into South County, not for the Paharo Valley, because we have very little H two A workforce in this valley. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Wasn't prepared for rebuttal, sorry. So thank you for the opportunity to let me ramble a little bit.
This is, this is Mike Avala one more time. Um, I did wanna talk to the levy funding if possible.
Mike, I, I believe we already gave you guys the opportunity and then, um, this is kind of the close with. But, uh, yeah, you, yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not completely informed on this, but I do know that the, um, there was a newspaper article that that stated that the Paharo River Levy rebuild was awarded sixty-seven million dollars in federal funding for infrastructure funds. That was a partial, partial funding by the feds and there's been a lot of push by, uh, a number of our congressmen and representatives to, to push through all the, the funding. So they've got a ton of momentum. Um, it sounds like, um, to, to us that that project's gonna be funded and built. Um, because the, the federal government is pushing a bunch of money into that. Um, and gonna be funded and built over the next ten years is what we've been told. Um, so it's been a long awaited project. It's that, um, that a lot of work has gone into and, and, uh, at the last planning commission meeting, as you're aware, um, there was comments about the studies that are being done and, and so the federal government is behind that project and pushing it through. That's what I know.
Hey, thank you. I see I have closed public comment, but I see a Mr. Hanson. His hands up? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I believe you already voted once, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to interject that he is our attorney for our Paharo Committee of Matters, so.
I would like to take advantage of Christine, uh, last minute to just say two things, uh, to you. First of all, before you make a decision, I suggest that you, um, confer with county council with regard to the comments that I have made and whether or not indeed the, uh, general plan amendment has nullified the existing zoning ordinances. The second thing I wanted to say is I have to ask, where else in the county is there a sixty unit apartment building at the end of a dead end road? That is very disturbing to me and I'd like to know where else there is such a development. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to staff. I'm, I'm gonna, I wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm gonna see if Fiona has any responses before I provide my input.
Um, I can respond to a variety of the comments received, but, um, at this time I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, um, I, I did wanna address a couple of things. We've talked about the agricultural buffer and there is a provision in the county zoning ordinance. Um, in the, in, uh, title twenty-one, it's chapter twenty-one, six, six, oh, three, oh, of the county's code. That new development adjacent to agricultural areas shall be required to establish a well-defined buffer zone within the area to be developed. And the area to be utilized as a buffer shall be placed in an easement required as a condition of project approval. Requirements for the easement are as, are, are numerous. So that policy was adopted pursuant to the nineteen eighty-two general plan. Um, we in two thousand and ten updated our general plan. And, um, planning and zoning law, California Government Code, uh, section, let's see, make sure, get my section right here. Uh, six, five, eight, six, zero speaks to the need for zoning ordinances to be consistent with general plans. So we knew in adopting the general plan that there would need to be an effort, effort made to update our zoning ordinances to be consistent with the general plan. Um, so what we're saying is uh, law, the, the state law requires consistency of implementing regulations, including zoning, to be consistent with the general plan. We have not gone through the effort to update our zoning. We have not gone through the effort to update our zoning code to be consistent with the two thousand general plan on this particular topic at this point. So we're applying the general plan as being in the hierarchy of development. Um, I, I could also address a couple other items, but I think I'll just leave that particular item. Um, and, and see if there's any questions from the commission or any desire for additional information before I respond.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Deal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if council might want to weigh in here. It seems to me, just logically speaking, that the hierarchy is, as you say, the zoning, um, decisions that have been made still are on the books. Seems to me that there might be some guidance about prudence and making sure that you don't that, that you take the most prudent option, given all that confusion, rather than saying that there's an opportunity here to reduce protections provided in either of those documents. That we might be able to say, something is more protective, we're gonna go with that, whichever it is. But I'm not sure I understand the reasoning for allowing flexibility based on the provisions of a general plan that are not reflected in zoning because we haven't got around to it yet. I'm not su- I'd like to hear council's thoughts about that if, if they are available.
I, I guess I tend to agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Deal. Um, that code section that Craig referenced does say that we'll amend the zoning code so that it is condition, uh, um, consistent with the general plan within a reasonable amount of time. Um, there are many portions of the zoning code that have been amended for consistency and there are some that remain. Um, obviously this ag buffer issue, as everyone has alluded to, has kind of been brought up tonight for the first time and I honestly would like more time to look at it than speaking off the cuff at almost eight o'clock at night after a long day and already a long meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you. I have, um, um, I guess a more general question about the ag buffer and I'm curious to know, first of all, for me personally, once I've heard the information and the fact that the ag commissioner here was, was here to speak about it is obviously it's, you know, it's meaningful and his expertise is valued. And so, you know, now that I've heard it, like I can't unhear it. So it's to me a very important thing that we need to, um, for, for, in my consideration, certainly is important. Um, but I'm curious to know in the other housing, uh, ag housing developments that we have approved and I think unanimously approved, um, that were also surrounded by ag land, obviously different situations than this. Was there an ag buffer considered there and does staff happen to know what that was?
Yes, um, the, the planning commission has approved, uh, buffers that were less than two hundred feet with the application of other mitigating factors like vegetative buffers or walls. Uh, there was one particular project on Hitchcock Road outside of the city of Salinas, uh, that comes to mind. And there's also been, um, reductions in buffers for, uh, projects that are, occur within the city's sphere of influence, where in particular, the buffer zone allows for some recreational use like a walking path or something. So there are, there are examples. And, and really what it boils down to, I think, um, is whether or not there are weather patterns, topographical features, trees and shrubs and other features of this particular development that, that warrant this specific one hundred foot agricultural buffer with, with the proposed with the, with the tree-lined vegetative screening. And so, um, that, that's the criteria and that we're applying to define that what is a well-defined buffer. Um, and so there's a number of factors involved and that's something for the planning commission to debate.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Mr. Lundquist, I've seen your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I, I was gonna mention that just as Craig mentioned, that there had been other projects where there was a lack, relaxed buffer, uh, from the code. But should the planning commission wish for staff to, to contemplate this further, it, it surely can. Um, there, you know, this is a development standard and so our current code does speak to um, the ability to reduce development standards under a variance application. Um, so if the planning, excuse me, so if the planning commission found that this in fact applied and that the hierarchy of the general plan does not take precedence, uh, that would be the avenue for consideration of reducing a development standard such as the agricultural buffer.
Commissioner Roberts.
I have one more question, um, related to process and maybe for county council. We've heard the applicant ask for a decision tonight and in some ways, even though, in some ways I feel like, uh, we have heard this and we kind of owe it to the public and to the applicant to allow this to move in whatever direction it's gonna move after tonight. And I'm wondering if county council can help us understand if that's something we should be doing or if we should be waiting to consider more information or I guess.
That's in the planning commission's discretion. I, I mean, I think gives you appreciate, depending on which, e- e- either way you make your decision tonight. This is appealable to board supervisors and these issues would be likely discussed further, but it's, I, I can't tell the commission how to move forward with this. It's in your discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Deal.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, to respond, I guess, to Mr. Lundquist's comment by saying, I'm uncomfortable as a planning commissioner determining about which hierarchical document has priority, legally speaking, particularly in the face of pretty explicit threats of litigation. And I think that's the sort of thing that would be, we would be well-served to have staff internally come through a series of discussions to come back to us with a clear recommendation based on their expertise. So, uh, that's the problem for me is that yes, I can certainly do what, say what I think. But I'm not sure that that's the most appropriate response for anyone. Because I wanted to just clarify that we do need housing. We need to move forward on all of these proposals as efficiently as we can. And I think what we're seeing here is a situation where the attempt to, uh, make speed has cost us time. I think that we have not had the kind of review that would allow us to move forward as expeditiously as we might all like. So one way or another, and I think I understand people's always desire to have an answer today. But I would not be comfortable giving an answer in the situation we find ourselves as a result of today's hearing without some pretty clear understanding that staff's recommendation is based on their ability to consult with one another and their various professional capacities and come back with a recommendation based on all of that. We've heard from the ag commissioner's office, we've heard from our staff, we've heard from county council and, uh, they're not in all cases, uh, aligned recommendation. So that's just a situation that, that I would, I would raise for the commission. And I do have other things to talk about later, but I, I don't want to sidetrack the conversation until it's time for more general discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Daniels.
In light of what Commissioner Deal just said, yeah, I have some questions about traffic, but I don't feel like it's quite the appropriate time to ask questions about, um, that yet. I wonder, and, and please, this is just, I'm throwing this out there. Is there ever a time when the commission moves something to the board of supervisors versus making a decision in light of, of, of a meeting like tonight?
Per, per the zoning code, you're the appropriate authority, so.
I just mean the threat of litigation, these sorts, the things that, that Commissioner Deal just brought up. I'm just curious if that's ever the case, but.
Hmm, I, I don't think that they have, in my experience, they have, the planning commission has made decisions at the point, you know, to the point where they, there's, you know, if they're not satisfied with the answers they've been given and they're asked to make a decision, they may deny it and then force the applicant to appeal, but I don't think, I, I'm not aware of a circumstance where they have actually, um, the planning commissions actually referred the matter to the board when it's not a legislative action or doesn't require court action without an appeal.
I, I'm just, um, wanting also, I'm, I'm thinking that it, it, we've now heard this several times. And so I think it's, this is our third time hearing this item. So I'm also thinking of the applicant and, and in, and in all fairness, like, you know, we should probably then make a decision tonight. Um, I do have some questions regarding traffic and, um, and wondering if this would be the appropriate time. Um, Chairman Dosa, I just, I'm thinking about, um, if there were ways in which we could minimize the impacts on the neighborhood. I did go and visit Susan Street, so I'm very familiar with one of the commenter's comments where cars are literally parked up on the sidewalk and there are a lot of cars there. So I was un, unclear how on a tertiary road like this one was identified where the rec, where, where the, the normal behavior is that if two buses were coming at the same time, one would pull over into a empty space. I, I don't know how frequent you would actually have an empty space to pull off and into if there were two buses at the same time or a garbage truck and a bus. And so, um, I just didn't know if there was any alternatives during the construction phase with larger trucks moving materials and things like that, if there was any ability to, to utilize the other entrance, um, ingress, egress that existed prior. I'm wondering if there's any opportunity for perhaps some parking opportunities for the residents, um, to utilize on, uh, in the development in the future that might be able to relieve some of the congestion that they experience on the street and that could, um, that could perhaps allow for some of the, the community, uh, experience that existed that I think residents are rightly concerned might not exist, the riding bikes on the street and things like that, that when it becomes a more heavily congested street, that maybe that there, is there any mitigations? I'm thinking in terms of mitigations, is there anything that could be done to, um, to improve the situation on Susan Street for the residents if this project moves forward? So if there are any thoughts that commissioners have, that's sort of what I'm trying to think about right now. And I do have that question about the tertiary street, because I just don't see how there could be space to pull off if there are two buses or a garbage truck and a bus on the street at the same time.
Yeah, I think, uh, from, from staff's perspective, we have, uh, Armando Fernandez from our, our traffic division here to help answer questions. Um, we do recognize that it is a narrow street and it would be difficult for cars to pass each other on that street. Um, the traffic analysis and response to some of the comments from previous hearings discussed, you know, using driveways, um, mostly, uh, where cars aren't usually blocking the driveway to, to kind of pull over in that gap between parked cars, um, or other spaces if there is, happens to be a space um, uh, to help pass each other. And I see Armando has his, uh, his video on, so I'll let him take it from there.
Armando, are you ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, we can.
Oh, yes, I think, yeah, so I think, um, the way, the way the, the, the section is structured is, is for a territory street with less than one thousand trips is, uh, identified for two, for parking on both sides of the street and two travel lanes. Um, in the case of this project, because many of these projects, eh, trip generation, more, much of this project to generation is gonna be buses. Eh, it's gonna have to be a yield street where, uh, vehicles going forward and backward into the project would have to find an opportunity and it, the, the closest opportunity is gonna have to be, uh, at, at least at a peak hour time, it's gonna have to be the existing driveways which allow for, uh, through vehicles to sort of move to the side and allow the other vehicles to, to move.
Through the chair, I'm thinking of a bus, though. And a bus being able to pull over. And I realize I should have asked this question about the traffic, but our conversation really went into a whole different direction with what was presented about the buffer and everything else. I should have asked this prior to the applicant's talking, um, but I've just, I guess it's too hard to go backwards right now. I'm sorry. And in the conversation to something is simple as a mitigation in conversations about traffic, because we've really taken this whole um, discussion into a different direction. But anyway, I, I have some concerns about that.
Through the chair, may I add to that conversation? Uh, the traffic engineer has visited the site multiple times and I was also utilizing Google Earth imagery to determine what the on-street parking availability is. And has determined there is, uh, almost always at least four or more parking spaces available, uh, which would provide adequate space for a bus to pull over. And if it was for, for the entire street, that'd be about one every two hundred feet. And the bus could travel that in nine seconds, so it wouldn't be a delay, um, for either vehicles. Um, but another opportunity would be available parking or driveways, as Armando has stated.
Thank you.
I think, uh, I'm not, haven't been asked to comment, but it, this is one of those situations where they, we, we've done the analysis, they meet the, the technical requirements for the tertiary street in terms of the width. And, you know, there is, there is this ability to navigate a narrow street with cars parked on the sides and it sometimes requires, uh, slowing down, pulling over, backing up. Um, and, and that's one of the things I think you've heard from the community. So that's, you know, that it's not an inconsistency with county code, but it's, 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 it's something we acknowledge, but have applied standards to and found that it meets the standards that we're applying that are published that we have, uh, available to us.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Commissioner Carrillo.
Um, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Deal and Commissioner Daniels, um, were saying in, in relations to, you know, with this last minute, um, information that we received and how this, you know, it's a little bit more of a, you're, you're not sure about which way, um, you know, to go. But I do want to make a comment that I did go to the site and I have visited some of the existing H two A housing. And I believe that, you know, the, the workers that are gonna be there are not gonna be there all year long. You know, they're not gonna be there all the time. You know, they, they started very early hour. Um, housing is so critical. Um, you know, I come from East Salinas where we've got Gardner, Del Monte and Sambon. Well, we've got apartment complex after huge apartment complexes, much bigger than what is being proposed. And I think that, you know, we are, um, a- and, and the one decision that had been made several years ago was saying that we're not gonna approve any more apartments, but they're still approving apartments because the need is great. The need is so great for affordable housing, for housing for our, um, agricultural workers. And I just, you know, again, the comments by Mr. Commissioner Gonzalez has thrown a little wrench in there, but, you know, I ju- just, um, it's such a great project and I just, you know. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, do I notice your hand was up? Yes. Commissioner Deal.
Thank you. I, I know I have a lot to say always, but I, it is an important project and I do have questions. The first one is just to follow up on Commissioner Daniel's remarks about the, the tertiary street and the response that it would become a yield street and a question for Public Works, I think, about whether we normally root Public works, I think, about whether we normally root regular bus trips through such kinds of streets. Is this something that we typically would do or are these more considered? A residential kind of formulation for for our streets. And we're adding.
I can answer that question if you allow me or.
Yes, sir, please, thank you.
Sir Fernandez. Armando.
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Yes, territory streets. Is intended for or envisioned more for residential type of traffic. Therefore, the reduce with, that's why the reason that the county allows a rebuilds with.
That's helpful to me and because I'm I'm with Commissioner Daniel struggling about the length of a bus and the length of a parking space. And the thought that somebody should have to pull over into some space that won't fit a bus. But really and truly, I want to go back to the thirty thousand foot level here. And say that I am and have always been throughout the history of these projects. An extremely strong supporter of the H two A housing that's been proposed. I think we have, as a commission, been in full support of everything that's come to us in that respect. The fact that we're not immediately in full support about this project, which I am, I'm definitely concerned about. Has to do with the specific characteristics of this project and this location. I don't recall from previous projects that they were in this kind of close proximity to such limited. Traffic infrastructure. I don't recall that, I think that that the ones that I that I can put my mind on. All have much more of an open space agricultural boundaries and potentially industrial neighbors. That so it's quite a different setting than a small. Narrow tertiary residential street. With this at the end of it, proposing to run the traffic to support this this significant activity. Through that neighborhood, so it's not. I would really strongly object to characteristic that I don't think or understand the importance of these projects. I don't think that's what I'm, I don't think that's where I'm coming from at all. I would also, however, say to those who talk about the concerns about late breaking news. If you believe in public hearings, that is why we have them. When you have prepare a project and we have the discussions and you do your research, there's always the possibility that you might miss something. And we have to hear from all of the people affected to make sure that we have it. So the late breaking is not ideal, of course, we'd like to have everyone have all of the time in the world. To think about these things ahead of time, design appropriately. But as I think it was Commissioner Roberts says, once something is comes up in the hearing, it is incumbent upon us. To pay attention to it and really grapple with that newly raised issue. Because that's why we have these hearings in the first place, so. I understand that they wish that we didn't have to do that, but I strongly believe in the public process and I think that we do. One of the things that is of concern to me is that I have heard a couple of suggestions from public commenters. That this project could subsequently be changed to an apartment complex. And I wanted to ask staff directly that whether this is a possibility, if we were to approve this project. What would be the subsequent process? Because I have to say, I don't. Believe we've done the kind of analysis of impacts that would support. The structure that's being proposed as a residential apartment complex. So the idea that it could just be converted administratively would be of great concern to me. And I would certainly, we did move forward with it, want to be certain that we specified the circumstances and process. That would be necessary if that were to be the intent of the operator.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Deal. They, there would be a need for. Separate permitting or review for non-employee housing. We haven't done the analysis of the inclusionary housing requirements for a typical multifamily dwelling. We are making assumptions on traffic and parking that are based on employee housing. So the approval is restricted to. The use of the property for employee agricultural employee housing in this case and any other use of that property. For standard multifamily residential use would require separate review and approval at some point in the future. That would need to address those discrepancies and any other issues that come up at that time.
And is that clearly indicated within the proposed discrepancy decision? Because I didn't see it there. I might could have missed it, there's a lot of stuff.
I do think it's in there somewhere, but I'd have to look again.
Okay, so we can't, you can't go and and talk to the to the head of planning and say, Mr. Spencer, I'd like to change it. And you can just say, yeah, okay, go ahead, that can't happen, has to come back to the same level of review that this is.
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful.
A discretionary permit would be required.
Okay. And then back to the thirty thousand foot level, because I live there a lot of the time, as many of you. One of the other issues that I find troubling about this particular proposal. Is the fact that we have not bought what we promised we would have in the twenty ten general plan, which is a community plan for Paharo. And that community plan would help us in this case immeasurably, because it would outline the sequencing and required. Infrastructure to support the housing that we want to see. And so we're being asked to. To look at a project by itself in a setting that's a larger setting that we know has some significant. Safety issues right now, none of us who have been around are going to forget the the flooding in Paharo. And the complete devastation of that community and difficulties for the people who live there. H two A brings with it a special level of responsibility. Because those are people who are going to be living in this structure as a as a part of their employment. So we have to make sure it's safe, we have to be convinced that we're not putting them in a place that is inappropriate. In the other proposals that we've had, that's never been an issue for me. I have seen clearly the the fact that people have made all the provisions possible for their physical safety. And in many cases, to try to make not only a safe but a pleasant and supportive environment. I see all the discretionary stuff here, but I still have questions about about liquefaction and buffers for goodness sake. And traffic and things of that nature. I mean, these are people that may want to walk out of that development at some point and go somewhere, you know, they don't have cars, very many of them. But they're going to be walking on Susan Street. So I'm back to, we desperately need housing, but we need it to be safe. And I'm as yet convinced that this specific application for this specific project. In its specific conditions in Paharo. Have really addressed the questions of safety to the level where I could vote for it. If I have to vote for it now, I have too many reservations, I'd have to vote against it and I hate being in the position of voting against housing. I'd rather see it come through right and be right there on top of it, so. That, I know it sounds long-winded and not clear, but that's where I'm at right now, is that I'm not convinced it's safe. I'm still not entirely convinced that the it's adequate raising of the flood elevation based on the. Potential for climate change and the long distance until we get actual flood improvements again, something that would be addressed in a community plan for this area. So that we would know what we were doing. I'm also concerned about the effect of this proposal on potential other projects that might actually be more appropriate. To the to the setting that which they're in, but we don't have that larger look in this case, because we're doing it in advance of a community plan. So. That, all that to say that I really appreciate all the work that everyone's done, but I think to some extent, we have not done the applicant. A service by trying to put this through on a mitigated neck deck in a hurry. I really don't think we've done the right thing here, because this is a situation that is different from the other H two A applications. That I have had the privilege of hearing, so. Traffic, safety, 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 that's buffers, that's floods, that's liquefaction. Concerns about overall infrastructure provision in the Paharo area. All of that makes me unwilling to take that risk at this time, understanding that, of course, all of this and the legal questions. Can be addressed in the inevitable appeal and what sounds like one way or another, probably litigation. Again, that's not a savings in time to anybody. If I, if we decide we want to vote today, I would have to say now that I would not be able to support the project as it has been presented. And I'm very sorry about that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. I'm I'm gonna echo what Commissioner Deal said in reference to the project. I live in the area here, North Monterey County's. The district I represent and. Though those are really valid concerns, I've actually visited the site on multiple occasions and. Traffic is a really big concern of mine. In reference to when the vehicles are parked on both sides, I drive a truck and and just the truck, you can't get. Two trucks going by each other at the same time, nevertheless, I'm thinking if we have two buses trying to achieve. You know, passing each other on the road there in the middle, I don't think that can be done. You also have to think about safety, safer since there's a bus coming, there's a fire truck going the other direction. Is a big concern that I don't feel that it has been addressed. Other situation coming out of Susan Street, if you're going to make a right or left. We have that built in the left-hand side where the body shop is at. That is a blind, but you can't see the cars that are coming from the left-hand side on San Juan Road, so I think that it's a hazard. And it has not been addressed to where. To where it would make it safer for people living there in the community. And furthermore, what Commissioner Gonzalez brought up is in reference to the buffer. I think that's a very, very valid concern, I I hate that. The applicant just found out about it, but if he's the professional, so I have to kind of go. I would miss, but what he's saying, everything else, I've heard in all the investigation I've done on my end. And so at this time, I'm with Commissioner Deal, I cannot support the project as it stands. That that's where I'm at, thank you, I don't know if any other commissioner has any. Thing to add, I would love to hear from all the commissioners. Commissioner Roberts.
I would just echo what all of you have already said, it would, I would take absolutely zero joy in. Voting against a housing project like this, but as it is proposed. I also couldn't support it with the the buffer to me, I mean, I I would hate to put a vulnerable population. In a further vol- vulnerable situation. I I couldn't live with that and the traffic issues, like Commissioner Deal said, the the previous projects we have approved. Have been, we've we've heard from residents, we've heard from neighborhoods say, hey, we don't want this in our neighborhood. And we, you know, the project far outweighed, the benefits of that product far outweighed the concerns of the public. And I, this, it was not the same situation, and so I also have reservations about that. And again, I it's, we, I I don't think there's a commissioner here that would say we don't need farmwork housing. I think we all believe very strongly that we need solutions. And you know, as proposed, I'm just not positive this is the solution. That with that said also, to me, just given my experience here. It is important to me that we make a decision tonight, one way or another, just to give the public the opportunity to move forward. To give the applicant an opportunity to move forward, I believe this particular project is a political decision in the end. And I think the further we, you know, I I think we're just taking up time at this point, we've we've heard the facts of the. Of the project and, you know, for or against, I think we owe it to everyone to make a decision tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, yes. I've heard a lot of different questions and comments and pros and cons from all participants. And I do also continue to have some questions and concerns regarding this particular project. As some of the other commissioners have mentioned, we always are pushing for affordable housing. And however, I I do think that there are a lot of different questions that are still there. And I'm very hesitant in terms of trying to support a project like this in this particular area. Another, you have to commend agricultural Commissioner Gonzalez, because regardless of whether it was last minute. Or not. I think it took him a lot of courage to say, you know, I have to, I had to speak out or else I would have just kind of let it go. Knowing that what I had to do, I had to do, so as far as some concern and from my perspective. I think he did the right thing and thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez for that. One of the other areas, I guess, and I and I believe I heard in in the previous meeting. That this agricultural workers were not necessarily going to work only in the. Watsonville, Paharo area, but I think that they were going to be transported. I thought I heard to King City and and possibly beyond, I'm not sure, I do remember King City. Not sure if it was even going to be further down in 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 that area. I do agree with, I know that there's, you know, like the Monterey Bay Economic Partnerships. The Avila Construction, the Grower Shipper Association and Agricultural Commission were in favor of this project. But the the LUEC was totally against it and most of the community members from this particular. Area, so I do agree with, you know, that what one of the gentlemen said. What the needs our community are, that we should be, it is very important for us to support what the needs our community are. And that we need to continue to develop housing, because we don't want homelessness to increase. However, you know, and I agree with them in terms of of meeting the needs of the community. But in this particular case. You know, there are a lot of community members in that particular area that are opposed to the project. And so if we're saying that we need or to meet the needs of 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 the community. Then I think that if if, hearing all the information, there are a lot of individuals that came and spoke. Against a project for X amount of reasons and in terms of the homelessness, well, you know. This particular project is not going to, I don't believe, help the migrant farm working families. And as Commissioner Deal said, that she's always supported particular projects, whether they were for migrant farm working families or not. Or whether it was for the. The workers in this particular case, but I I believe that. I don't know if it really helps the homelessness situation or not, because they are really not helping some of the. The community that's local or the migrant farm worker family, so I don't think I, being there, too many questions. I don't think I could, you know, support this project if it if it goes forward tonight or not. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Work.
Uh, yeah, sorry. I I agree with everything that's been said. I would have a hard time supporting it. I'm a little bit new to the project. So I didn't get in, in those first meetings, but it just seems to me with, like regarding the buffers and traffic, we assume that it was organic, we assume that it's gonna stay worker housing. But those are assumptions and you know what that stands for. It can change rather quickly. And if we are going to be good planners and planning, I would have a hard time supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Work. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you, Chairman Mendoza. I didn't think it needed repeating, therefore I won't repeat. But I do echo my fellow commissioners' comments on everything. I have one thing that I think I want to make sure that Agricultural Commissioner Gonzalez knows I am very grateful for any information brought at whatever point in in a meeting because any information is valuable and I don't consider it eleventh hour. That just puts a negative connotation on, on the comment. But the other thought that occurs to me that just burns at me a bit is the whole traffic study and the information that there is room on the tertiary street for a bus and a car to meet. And then somehow one of the two can drive about an average of 200 feet in reverse to find that opening on the side of the street somewhere so that the other vehicle could go by. And what occurs to me is at what point is there gonna be a bus encountering a vehicle? The bus is, is it a school bus for the community? Do we have school buses on that street or is this gonna be? Whatever kind of bus it is, carrying whatever passengers it's carrying, the vehicle that's gonna be asked to go in reverse 200 feet to look for that opening is going to be a vehicle of one of the residents who will have to move to accommodate that bus and take that risk of having to go in reverse down the street. That's a risk we're asking residents to make. And that's not a risk I'm comfortable, especially when it's a residential community, you've got children everywhere and they're used to having their street and having access to their street. So it not only puts the drivers in danger, it's putting all those people who live there in danger because nobody's expecting a car now because there's this residential community to be on the lookout for this car coming in reverse down the street to make room for the bus that might be coming along. So that remains something that concerns me. Of course, the new subject that came up here tonight was about wind. And I thought that was interesting and I wouldn't mind hearing more about that and the effects of the wind. But the, the traffic to me is my biggest concern for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mosabe. Commissioner Daniels?
I just wanna be clear, since I'm the one who brought up the traffic is is that I, I, I'm, if you, if you read the report, there is room for a bus and a car to pass. It was that I was concerned about two buses coming or a bus and a garbage truck. So I just wanna be very clear that I wasn't implying, though I have visited the street and I am looking at the photographs right now. And I do have the concern that many cars that are parked on the street are actually parked up on the curb. Not quite the actual normal parking spit, parking that we would be used to away from the curb. But I wasn't meaning to imply that I didn't think a bus and a car could pass. I was meaning to imply that there were two buses or a bus and a, and a and garbage truck that might face difficulty. And I don't have any further comments at this, at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. Commissioner Deal?
I just wanna say that in my experience going to the site, that there is not room for a Subaru and a pickup truck turning in at the bodywork at all. And a standoff, had to wait for somebody to come out for my, in order to get in there, just from my own experience. And that does color my understanding of the traffic analysis. So there you go.
That's correct, Commissioner Deal. Yeah, I actually have the same experience myself. Like I said, I drove my truck and there's no way that two vehicles could go by there at the same time. If there's the last, a, a bus in my truck, it would never work. But that's kind of where we're at. I believe we've heard from all the commissioners. Do we have a motion? Anybody? Commissioner Deal?
Mr. Chair, normally we would defer to the representative of the area. I just wanna be clear that if I'm to move ahead, it's knowing that you are not available for that right now. And Commissioner Kofold is not here today. But normally this would be the purview of the person whose area the project is proposed in. That being said, I'd like to move that we, we, do we have to do an intent to deny, Mr. Spencer? Is that what we have to do? We don't seem to have a resolution for that.
That's usually what happens. You can direct staff to prepare resolution to, for denial with direction on, you know, the, the street width and the egg buffer and any other issues you see should be part of that, that analysis and we would prepare that after the fact. But usually, commission wants to see that language before they take action.
Okay, with that guidance, I'm going to say I'd like to suggest that we don't get it back. We must go ahead and move it right along to the board for their consideration and that we vote to deny the project based on concerns about traffic, concerns about buffers, concerns, concerns about flooding and liquefaction. And anything else that I'm forgetting, people, please can help me out. But my, my, my preference would, in, in deference to all the people who have talked about moving this forward, that we don't require that that resolution come back to us at this time and allow staff to prepare the staff report for the board so that they can understand and delve into these issues as may be necessary.
Through the chair, just for clarity, it would go to the board on an appeal, but I would think you'd get an appeal from the applicant.
I, I was, I, I'm sorry, I had assumed that as we just heard from Commissioner Work, I'm not supposed to do that. But it did, it did sound to me as if a denial would be very likely to move forward on an appeal. So regardless, denial based on the, at least the things that I mentioned. And I would be open for other commissioners to add concerns that they felt should be included. And if you wanna put in about Subaru and pickup trucks, feel free.
And I'll second your motion, Commissioner Deal.
I'm not running for anything, so I can make that motion.
I'm sorry?
Never mind.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Deal, second by myself, Commissioner Mendoza. Mr. Spencer, can you please take a vote?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Correa?
No.
Commissioner Kofold is absent. Commissioner Daniels?
Are you asking for my vote?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. And the motion was to deny.
The motion is to deny and direct staff to prepare resolution for denial based on traffic, egg buffer, flooding and liquefaction.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman is absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Chairman Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And why don't we take about a five-minute break? Is every, everybody okay with that or 10 minutes? It's probably a good idea. Yeah, let's, let's take a 10-minute break. Okay? We'll see.
Chairman, does I just saw Commissioner Work put his hand up, he might have a question before we break.
Okay, that's Commissioner Work.
Yeah, I was curious, will you, if I have to duck out, will you still have a quorum?
We'll have seven, so yes.
Okay, I'm going, I'm gonna have to excuse myself, so, um, sorry.
Chair, I'm sorry. Also, um, we do not need interpreters for the next item, is my understanding. So since that item has, yes, since that item has ended, I think we could allow the interpreters to go home for the night.
They have to stay with us. They're not going nowhere. Yes, they can go.
They've worked so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be back in 10.
Sister Claire, just wanna let you know your audio is on.
Oh, thank you. I turned it off. Christine, turn.
Mr. Spencer, can you take vocal, just to make sure we're all back?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Corio? See, her, her name is still on here, give her a minute. Commissioner Corio, you're there? Perhaps we'll come back to her. Commissioner Kofelt was absent. Commissioner Daniels?
Here. I'm sorry, did you?
Commissioner Deal? Yes.
I'm here, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Daniels, Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Montalve?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
I'm actually here, yeah, I'm actually here driving and it's working, so I'll participate as long as I can.
Thank you. And Chairman Doza?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. And now we'll go on to item number five, PLN 210037. Brown clear, staff whenever you're ready.
Second. Good evening, Commissioners. Can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So I'm Phil Angelo and I'll be presenting staff's report regarding PLN 210037, the Barone project. The project is located at 2445 Bayview Avenue in the Carmel area land use plan. And the project proposes to demolish an existing single-family residence with an attached garage and construct a new single-family residence with an attached one-car garage and an attached accessory dwelling unit in substantially the same footprint. And this is the existing site survey, and then this is the proposed site plan for the project. The setbacks specifically for the accessory dwelling unit encroach into the front and the north side setback. However, this is allowable per the accessory dwelling unit provisions in state planning and zoning law, which indicate that no setback shall be required for a living area that is constructed in the same location and to the same dimensions as an existing structure. And this is the case as they've designed this area, the accessory dwelling unit, to match the existing setback and the existing height of the home that is there. Our zoning regulations also require two parking spaces for a single-family dwelling and one for an accessory dwelling unit. However, similarly, state planning and zoning law precludes us from requiring a parking space for the accessory dwelling unit. So the applicant is proposing two parking spaces. One, which would be in a garage, and one, which would be here tandem in the front setback. The zoning ordinance is written in a way where it indicates that parking is required to be outside of the setback, unless you secure a coastal administrative permit, in which case it's allowable. So the coastal administrative permit is incorporated into the project description. Sorry, finally, by matching the existing footprint and the proposed footprint as much as possible, the project minimizes the potential impact to archaeological and cultural resources, which advances the objectives, the Carmel area land use plan. And then these are the front and the rear elevations for the project. And then this is the floor plan with the ADO up here in slightly darker shade of gray. The project would be consistent with the visual resources policies of the Carmel area land use plan and the surrounding neighborhood character. It was flagged with orange netting, which demonstrated that it was consistent in scale with the surrounding residences. And it utilized a finished palette, including tan plaster, caramel stone, and bronze trim, which have the appearance of natural materials. An initial study was prepared to evaluate the potential impacts of the project to archaeological and tribal cultural resources. The project archaeologists reviewed archival records and performed subsurface auger hand dig tests at several different locations on the site. As none of the subsurface testing indicated any evidence of archaeological resources, they concluded that the potential for the site to contain buried or subsurface resources was extremely low. The county also conducted tribal consultations with the Alona Costinua Nation and the Esalen tribe of Monterey County. Although neither tribe indicated that there were specific known resources on site, both tribes discussed the general sensitivity of the Carmel point. Based on these consultations and the known sensitivity of this area, county is, or staff are recommending two mitigation measures, one of which would require cultural sensitivity training for the construction crews, so they would be able to identify if any tribal cultural resources are uncovered during earthwork and a second requiring an onsite tribal monitor to ensure that any resources, which would be found, if they would be treated with appropriate dignity and respect. The county received public comments during and after the circulation period of the initial study. The Kakoon Taruk Band of the Alona Costinua Nation expressed some concern regarding the potential of the project to impact cultural resources that it was within their Aboriginal territory and requested detailed project information. The county responded indicating that it was within their area and that we provided them notice of the project as well as details on the project, including the plans and information on today's hearing. We also received comments from neighbors Michael and Susan Lynch and Sherry and Randy Pogue. The neighbors concern, comments expressed concerns regarding whether the accessory dwelling unit would be rented separately from the main residence, the variation from the parking standards, and the proposed front and side setbacks being encroaching into the setback area. The county wouldn't regulate whether the property owner rented either unit for long-term rentals, but neither would be permitted as a short-term rental. And as indicated previously, state planning and zoning law precludes the county from requiring parking space for the accessory dwelling unit. Regarding the setbacks, the letter identifies concerns with what the proposed dimensions are, whether the north side setback in particular would be a fire safety concern, and whether the specific provisions allowing reconstruction in the same location apply to accessory dwelling units, or, or I'm sorry, apply to both junior and accessory dwelling units or only non-junior accessory dwelling units. The proposed front and side, or side and front setbacks are approximately 32 inches and 16.5 feet, respectively. This information is on the project plans, and it was on the plans that the local fire agency reviewed and indicated that they would sign off on the building permit for. The section cited as allowing setback in the footprint, it does say accessory dwelling units. In this case, the applicant revised their proposal from a junior accessory dwelling unit to an accessory dwelling unit, so that provision would apply. See, the applicant's representative, Catherine Avala, also provided an additional comment letter, which responded to some of the neighbors' comments. County staff considered all of these comments and do not believe that any revisions to the initial study would be required. Earlier this afternoon, staff distributed two errata memos on the project. The first recommended adding some additional language to the undergrounding utilities requirement condition, condition number nine, to clarify what would happen if any cultural resources were identified while undergrounding the utilities, as well as added deed restriction condition for the accessory dwelling unit. After this, after distribution of this errata, the applicant submitted revised plans and indicated they would like to revise the scope of work to be an accessory dwelling unit and not a junior accessory dwelling unit. So staff are no longer recommending that deed restriction condition. I apologize. And so, as part of our recommendation today, we would, staff would be recommending the following changes from those two erratas, that condition number nine be modified as it indicates in the first errata, and that the evidences be modified, as is shown in that errata. And then, from the second errata, that the scope of work be changed from a junior accessory dwelling unit to an accessory dwelling unit, and that references within the resolution, referring to a junior accessory dwelling unit be changed to an accessory dwelling unit, and to substitute the project plans, which are Exhibit B attachment to, to the ones that were provided in that second errata. And then finally, delete this sentence. State planning and zoning law section 65852.22 requires that the owner either occupy the junior accessory dwelling unit or the main residence from finding six evidence M, because that only applies to junior accessory dwelling units. And so staff's recommendation with those proposed changes would be to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, approve a combined development permit for the scope of the project, and adopt a mitigation and monitoring and reporting plan. And that concludes staff's presentation, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo, good presentation. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you, good presentation, Mr. Angelo. Question, just for my own edification, can you explain to me the distinction between the ADU and the JADU, and clarify whether any structural changes are indicated to make that difference? Or is it simply a different name on paper? Thank you.
Through the chair, I can, yeah, I can respond on that. There are differences in what's required between the two units. In this case, what they would be proposing would meet either definition. Generally, the regular accessory dwelling units are more flexible. They can be larger, they don't have the owner occupancy requirement. You don't need to do it within the space of an existing or proposed single-family dwelling. It can be attached or detached. And then the junior accessory dwelling units are more limited. They need to be 500 square feet or less. They would need to be in an existing or proposed single-family dwelling, among other things. In this case, though, it would only be a change on the plan set to change the name. No other alterations needed.
Yeah, that was really my main question, is this, this is not requiring any alterations to the actual plans, just, just changing the name of what they're asking for, right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Mr. Menquist?
Thank you, Chairman Doza, I was just gonna kind of maybe get it, Martha, help her understand the designs and ask Phil if he could share the floor plan, so it's clear how the design meets that standard. That's possible. Well, do you have that floor plan handy?
Uh, yeah, do one second.
So what we're looking at here is the errata?
Yeah, this is the revised floor plan from the errata.
Okay. And just to be certain that this is not within the residence, there isn't a connection there at the hall? That is a closed wall. As you zoom, zoom down, and it looks like maybe there's the ability for one to walk from the great room through the hall. So that would need, we would need to condition that such that that is a solid wall, so they're not inter-interconnected.
Through the chairs, that also the case with the guest bath?
Bathroom, yeah, that looks like it goes through too, so that would need to be closed. It needs to be an independent living facility. Is that the, over to the, is that again a passer from the guest bathroom into that ADU bedroom? That's what that would appear to me to be. Those would need to be enclosed spaces. Just to meet the definition.
Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, I'm just following through on this, so to understand the applicant is proposing this change in order to not have the residency requirement, is that the only big difference? Because otherwise, it is awfully confusing at this point in the, in the structure, in the process, to be changing something like that, unless there's a really good reason. I mean, I find myself concerned with things like, you know, notice and stuff.
Especially with the already very confusing state of state ADU law. I would add on.
The, the ADU law is really the thing that makes it, makes it somewhat confusing. There are regulations applicable to junior ADUs, regulations applicable to regular ADUs that are considered junior ADUs, regulations that apply to the adoption of ordinances locally, and regulations that apply absent the adoption of local ordinances. So it's somewhat confusing, but. So it's somewhat confusing, but I think in, in the end, there are, there's a requirement that a junior ADU be of a certain size and be deed restricted to include only those, those things that are allowed in the JADU, whereas an ADU without the J in front has a little more flexibility and can be bigger. So I think that's really the only thing that's driving the change in the, in the nomenclature. There is a provision in state law that allows local governments to limit the internal access from one to another if it's an ADU. Instead of having it be sharing internal circulation with the main house.
I think the only other distinction there too between Jade and used AD kitchen. It's another efficiency kitchen with a JADU compared to a small kitchen.
Through the chair?
Oh yes, Commissioner Deal.
All right, so I'm, I'm semi-terminally confused. There's this, when this package came to us with, it was a recommendation for approval of the JADU, so I am of the opinion that at that time, the proposal that we're looking at essentially like this, it hasn't changed in size or scope or location. Was consistent with all the regulations we're aware of for a JADU at that time. Is that true?
Yes.
And now we have a late change to an ADU and we're not certain that this particular same configuration, same location, same size is consistent with the ADU. Is that right?
I I would not necess- So there are provisions that allow local jurisdictions to limit internal circulation, but I don't believe unless I'm mistaken on this, that we have those.
Again, I mean, that's where I'm at. It's like I heard from Mr. Lundquist that some concern about that and I mean, if I remember the public, how would I know what I'm commenting on if we're gonna change it now?
My understanding and the applicant have, may have their own reasoning for proposing the change, the project proposal is up to them, but the main two differences are the requirement for the deed restriction doesn't apply to ADUs. And then the provision that was cited in the staff report and the resolution regarding building exactly within the same footprint applies specifically to ADUs, but it does not say JADU, so it's not as clear that it applies to them or not. So it's in analysis, it's, it's likely about those two things is you, you would not need the deed restriction. It makes it clear that that setback provision applies. But
So the, through the chair, let's move to council and say that because something applies to ADUs, can we assume that it would be completely restated? Did apply to a JADU? I mean, is ADU not a general category?
It, it's not. And when you look at the two government code sections that are relevant to each ADUs and JADUs, there are some differences. And then there's a section in the JADUs statute that refers you back to the ADU statute. It's very circular and it depends on what you're talking about.
So when we received the public comment respect, the perspective of the provisions that were being cited for the JADU not being said specifically to apply to a JADU, did you have a chance to review that and see which, which of the two categories it fell into?
Yeah, the letter referenced that six, five, eight, five, two point two, A1D7. And I agree that that wouldn't apply to JADUs. You'd need to look to the JDU statute, which is six, five, eight, six, five, eight, five, two point two, two. And there's a section within that that speaks to setbacks. It's subsection G. And it says if a local agency has not adopted a local ordinance pursuant to this section, the local agency shall ministerially approve. And then it refers back to another section of six, five, eight, five, two point two with regard to setbacks. And I know this is all very confusing what I'm saying right now and I apologize.
But bottom line, does, does it say that we have to do something different in our consideration of setback?
It states the side and rear setbacks are sufficient for fire safety.
On both of them or just one?
Um, for both.
So it's a distinction without a difference in that case, and this was, applies to this project. Is that true?
Yeah, I guess effectively. The reference to that code section initially, that subsection A doesn't necessarily apply to JADU, so.
But if, it does. I guess I'm just saying, so if we were to find the correct code section, which does apply to it, which is a reasonable thing to say, oh, we got the wrong section. We looked at the one which we know does apply. It's gonna say the same thing effectively.
Yeah, for a JADU, but now apparently we're talking about an ADU and I saw the errata at the same time you did. So this was new to me at whatever time the errata came out.
Right. And so my, my concern here, I'm sorry to take so much time, everybody. My concern here is that the, if the errata makes a significant change, it is a little different than an errata. It's something that everybody would need to know about. If it doesn't change the outcome at all, with the exception of the deed restriction, which sounds to me like the main remainder item. And potentially internal circulation, although we don't know. That seems less of a concern with respect to making sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
I, I would have reservations with the internal circulation. The intent of an ADU is it'd be an independent living facility with internal connections. It is not an independent living facility and it would need to have full cooking facilities for the definition of accessory dwelling. But those, those can easily be, should the planning commission wish to support, that can easily be conditioned such that those remain, whatever those pass-through areas are, will be sealed and remained independent from the main house.
Okay, so it may perhaps the applicant will speak to their intent, whether or not they want to go that route, because it doesn't sound to me like they've had much time with this. So I'll be interested by them. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. And I don't see any other commissioner questions, so we'll open it up to the applicant whenever you're ready. Mr. Lundquist?
Legacy hand, so sorry.
Are we opening it up to applicant or is there another comment?
I know to the applicant.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Pamela Anderson Brulee. And I'm the principal in charge of the project. Daniel Ho is with me here today and the team is on the call, so we have our our design team and our construction team as well as the owner. So I would like to talk about the project, the design and what the implications are, and then I would like to answer the questions, probably one is why did we make this change? When, after I've been able to just tell you a little bit more about the project, because it, it will become clearer, I believe. We also have gone to the state and gotten information about this that can clarify something. So if it is okay, I'd like to spend a little bit of time on the design itself. Let's start off by showing you the, the existing house. The owner has owned this property in the family for forty-five years. Has been exceedingly occupied with being the head of school for Santa Catalina and has for the last two years been working diligently with the planning department to get approval for moving forward with the house. It is of a condition that it may, it would be have been more expensive, if you will, to just renovate. There's a lot of deterioration. There's a lot of mold, there's issues. So it was ultimately decided to build new. We know very well that we're in an archaeological sensitive area. There was a desire to keep the house in a similar looking feel. And so one story, we met early with planning and talked about keeping the footing on top of the existing footing in order to not disturb the soils. And that was the, the concept began from that perspective. So we are improving every aspect of it. It is all new. We are also being careful with when we construct to have the fire-rated walls where we need them. And it is really a beautiful home. So I want folks to know that every intent was to create a very sensitive, one-story home. To build on top of the existing footings and then to create a home that fits really well into into Carmel and the area. If I could just take a second, we're gonna click on this and it'll allow you to see some important details that I'll walk you through. So we're coming into a wooden fence into an entry area. The entire house is designed to agent place. It's all accessible. You can see that the, the ADU on the side, we, we kept the roof line the same within the setback around the corner. And then we did a nice feature of having the stone, the caramel stone on either side of the, of the project. So this allowed us to keep the, the roof lines relatively low and in, and matching the existing. We, we have our area for our tandem parking and a garage that is a one-car garage. With the room that we have to do it. There's a simple pathway that leads to the backyard. The entire backyard is, considers all of the water retention natural area. One of the things about a JADU is you can add an ADU. And it really wasn't a desire to ever have another dwelling in the backyard. And we were concerned with, with comments that we received from the neighbors pretty late in the game that they were concerned about not only having the JADU, but having an ADU. And really what we are looking for is the ability to have an agent place circumstance where we could have, say, a live-in person naturally that able to help. We were, and still are, under the impression that Monterey County does not require a separation between those units. So we would want to discuss that if you do, in fact, that is something that when we talked about it earlier, that the only difference between, for us and the way this is particularly designed is that kitchenette. We had already had a kitchenette in the project and this would mean just enlarging it. We have a, we already found the unit and with, that has the sink, the cooktop and the refrigerator. And it fits within, I think we have to potentially move it a couple of inches. So the design is exactly the same for whether it is a JADU or an ADU. And we believe that there does not have to be a separate entrance. We prefer to be able to keep that doorway in the hall in order for somebody to come in and, and assist in the main house if, if necessary over time. So the, the reason that the request was for the change was, we really felt that that folks were getting nervous about all of this and ultimately having deed restrictions, having that when there is no intent to build anything more on the property seemed unnecessary. So I believe there is no difference between the JDU and ADU except for that kitchenette. And I'd like to just clarify with Phil, it's our understanding there does not need to be a separate wall in that, in that case. So that's an important thing for us to understand and know. But we were responding to comments that we received relatively late also from neighbors. So I think we'll turn it back to you for questions and we do have the entire team here. And one of the members of Avala's team, just letting you go to bed, just kidding. The Avala team is, has been corresponding with, with the state and getting clarification. So we can further talk about that as well, the ADU, JDU.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that explanation, although as you might expect, it's not yet clear in my mind. I'm a little slow here. So maybe this is a question for staff or for the applicant, I'm not sure. But what is the deed restriction say? The deed restriction for a JADU isn't gonna say that you can't have an ADU. That's not what it says. What is it supposed to say?
Essentially, it says that you cannot sell the JADU from the main residence and that the JADU needs to comply with the provisions of six, five, eight, five, two point two, two. So it's fairly redundant with what that state law actually says. I think that the comment of it wouldn't preclude having another ADU comes from if you build it as a single-family home and a regular ADU, you could not then build a JADU as an attached or a new structure because they need to be within the existing footprint of the single-family dwelling.
Huh?
Sorry.
Sorry, but okay, so here's the thing. The deed restriction just says you can't sell part of your house separately from the other part of your house. Okay? So the deed restriction is not gonna change the density. What changes the density is you've, you've dug the space. You can't then add to your house. You don't have any place in the house to do a junior ADU. But nobody has any intention to do that anyway. So I'm, I'm just really, I'm really pushing back against this change in designation in response to somebody's concern. Because I don't think it's justified and I don't think it's necessary. And I think it makes things a whole lot more confusing than they were before. I came in here thinking I understood this project and now I don't. For no reason that has to do with the actual building of the project at all. It just has to do with people trying to change words on paper to get around some rule that they're not clear on, on the first place. So I would still put to the applicant and everybody else, is it really necessary to make that change? Is this something that you feel compelled to do? Because the findings and evidence before me with the package indicated that the proposal was compliant with the JDU regulations with the addition of the required deed restriction, which just says you can't sell part of your house separately from some other part of your house. And now we're not sure it is compliant with an ADU because of the questions regarding internal circulation. So put to the applicant, the question is, are you sure you want to do that?
I, I think Commissioner Deal was asking for applicant's response in this particular case.
So potentially some clarifications. I believe the deed restriction also limits. It, it requires it be owner occupied and for the life and of the property. And even if, as it's inherited or sold to anyone else, is that correct? Any questions to fill?
I can pull up that code section and screen share and says what's required. Do you want me to do that?
That's what I'm trying to do right now.
I have it here.
Oh, I was gonna pull up the state law.
Oh, sorry.
All right, you all see that?
So I think to answer the applicant's question, and I didn't see that it does require owner occupancy. Unless I missed it.
Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you, and my apologies. I was in the car in the first part of the presentation, so I didn't get to see it, but I listened to everything. Couple of things, one. I'm assuming we're looking at the state law because we haven't yet finalized our ADU ordinance for the coastal zone. Is that accurate?
It hasn't been certified by the coastal commission.
Okay, okay. So we're still waiting on Okay, okay, so we're still waiting on that. And then the other thing is, is that I would really caution against changing course by the applicant at this point in time because somebody isn't happy with the state law that lives nearby. I mean, it's a housing law that, you know, if you meet certain conditions, you can have a JADU and an ADU on your property. And that's going to be a process that's going to be afforded to everybody who can make that work in order to create housing. So I think that it sounds like this is a JADU. It sounds like that is the desire of the applicant, was the original desire of the applicant. It looks like it meets all the conditions of a JADU. And, you know, it's most likely that the property is going to have certain constraints that don't allow for an additional ADU unless it's quite small anyway. But I think we might want to consider just moving forward with the original project that was presented to the commission and discuss that draft resolution and not the new proposal because it looks like it works, it looks like it fits. And I don't see any of the requirements that the applicant just was concerned about. We extensively studied the ordinance when we moved it to the Board of Supervisors. And I certainly don't remember an owner-occupied requirement for having a JADU in a building or something like that. I can't remember. But I just say let's move forward. And if it's okay with the applicant, perhaps consider this a JADU and look at the original proposal.
So I guess the question would be, what would the applicant like to do?
I would like to share the screen because I just want to be really clear that, and I really appreciate the last comment, because we are feeling pressure and trying to do things that create a good neighborhood with all folks. But it is our understanding that, two things are our understanding, or maybe I should say three. One, that there is a requirement on 65852.22. Number two, require owner occupancy in the single-family residence in which the junior accessory dwelling unit will be permitted. The owner may reside in either the remaining portion of the structure or the newly created junior accessory dwelling unit. Owner occupancy shall not be required if the owner is another governmental agency. So it is our understanding and maybe, just want to clarify that, that that is accurate. And I would like to clarify that in, that you have not created a, it's not an ordinance, but for the separation between an ADU and a house, I don't believe you, it can be done locally, but I don't believe you have done that. So these are really questions for me. And before we answer the last one, I just want to make sure that we understand those two things are probably really important in order to get a final decision from the actual owner, who is talking to us. If we could clarify those two things.
Yeah.
So that's the confusion that we were discussing earlier amongst other confusion. But there's requirements in the current ADU regulations that restrict the ability of local governments to adopt ordinances that do or don't do certain things. That's what that language is speaking to. We can adopt an ordinance that would require occupancy by either the main unit or the junior accessory dwelling unit by the owner. We haven't adopted ordinances yet. So we're applying the state law absent locally adopted regulations. That, you know, whether it's mandatory to apply that requirement or not is not well-understood absent the adoption of local regulations. I think it's allowing us to adopt that sort of regulation, but we haven't adopted a regulation. So I'm not sure we have to apply it absent the adopted local regulation. That's why the current state law is somewhat confusing. And that happens in both ADU and JADU categories. It's confused between how it applies to the adoption of ordinances and how it applies absent a locally adopted ordinance. It's not clear. So it would be within the Planning Commission's discretion a little bit, but I would say that it does not require us to implement that provision of the language absent an, absent an.
Yeah, and so I think that that would very much help us to understand. You know, we are also, we are all, it is all new to all of us. We dive in and we dig deep. But if you are explaining to us that you do not have to apply that and it is not implied, I think it would be a very quick decision and to go back to the original proposed proposal and just, you know, we'll take exceedingly good care to build a beautiful home for the neighbors. And really, our whole intent is to create a beautiful home for the owner and a beautiful place around for everyone else. So I appreciate that. So if that is not, you can approve without that requirement, then I think we would very much agree to keep the application as it was originally submitted.
And all the conditions are acceptable?
The mitigating conditions we have gone through them all, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, just for my own curiosity for staff, the draft that's before the California Coastal Commission that we're waiting to get to be adopted, it did not have that condition in it, the Monterey version. I mean Monterey County's ordinance for the coastal zone did not have that condition. That, because it's totally unfamiliar to me, so I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, as it's been adopted by the board and submitted to the Planning Commission, it does not have that provision in it. But those rules don't apply yet, so.
Yeah, that's right. I just wanted to be clear. If I was missing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal, I had noticed, yes, Commissioner Deal?
And I just wanted to check with staff as well, that if we approve, were to approve this as a JADU today with the rules that are in front of us today, we wouldn't retroactively go back and attack and apply such a condition, even if it did end up in our ordinance. Is that correct?
I read that section is that our ordinance would require it. I mean, the language says the ordinance, or the ordinance shall do all of the following, which includes number two. And I didn't work on that ordinance, so I don't remember whether that was added, but.
I didn't read it that way. If we go back and look at the text, wasn't that it may? Local jurisdiction, they may include.
They may require a permit to be obtained for the creation of a JADU and shall do all the following.
Oh. That's why we have lawyers.
Through the chair.
I ask Commissioner Daniels?
So I'm just going to re-ask my question because even if that's the case, the version that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Monterey County's coastal zone ordinance that we worked on and then sent to the Board of Supervisors and that's now at the Coastal Commission, did not have that provision. Is that accurate?
I don't know.
I just don't remember seeing that ever before. That's why I'm asking.
I probably can find the board-adopted ordinance that is not ineffective. That would be helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Daniels, your hand's still up. Do you have anything to add?
No, thank you very much. Other than you're doing a fantastic job this lady.
I am trying.
No, I'm just waiting to hear what the public made of all this, Mr. Chair.
Well, let's do that. Let's open it up to public comments. So if anybody would like to speak on this item, they can please raise your hand. I don't see any hands. I think the public's asleep. Do we have any emails on this item? Actually, we do have. Michael DeRusse?
Yes, hello. This is Michael DeRusi. My wife and I live directly across the street at 2444 Bayview. And we do think the design is a beautiful-looking design, but are primarily concerned about the parking. Bayview is directly behind scenic, and a lot of people, of course, want to enjoy the ocean and overflow to Bayview. And I often find it difficult to drive down the road and just get into my driveway. And the last thing we really want is more parking. So I'm hung up on the ADU, JADU, and the variance they're looking for of not having the extra off-street parking. And I'm super concerned about if it's going to be an ADU. And the main difference is the JADU has a deed restriction not allowing the sale. That implies to me that the ADU doesn't have that restriction, and it could theoretically be sold to another party, creating condos across the street. So can someone clarify that for me?
Through the chair, Mr. Angelo's computer restarted, so I'll try to answer that question. But to clarify, the question was whether or not the project could be sold and turned into condos?
I believe that was the question, if it could be sold separately.
Well, perhaps. I believe they would have to have a condo conversion or a condo subdivision, so it'd still take an entitlement before that would occur. It wouldn't just occur by just by the sale, even if there wasn't a deed restriction. But, Kenny Councilor, I'm incorrect?
It can't be sold separately, but there are other state laws that might apply. SB 9, I'm thinking of, Senate Bill 9, which was adopted last year, potentially provides for that opportunity, but that's not what we're talking about here.
If I recall, SB 9, didn't both lots have to be of equal size in order to separate the property? So I guess it would be different because this property here, the junior ADU would be attached to the house. Isn't that correct?
SB 9 allows for ministerial approval of a lot split or construction of two separate single-family dwellings on a lot. This is, it's not really applicable in this case. Someone wouldn't separately describe a portion of their home and sell it separately with a, that would be more of a condominium-type project. And that does require subdivision approval, so I don't see that happening here.
Yeah, but after, I agree with you. Solon Quest, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Dosa. I know it's getting late here and it seems like there's a lot of questions surrounding the difference of JADUs, ADUs, what this project is, what it might be. It seems to me like, and I don't know if Michael was the only public comment that we received that we continue to take the public comment and then continue the matter to a date certain where we can work with the applicant and bring back a project that staff can make a recommendation on. Because I think it's also apparent that perhaps some of us, like myself, haven't had a chance to really look at this as well.
That's a great idea. I mean, it sounds like there's quite a few questions in reference to you can sell part of your house now, so that's a great idea. Let's continue with the public comment. If there is any additional public comment. And also, we can check, see if there's any emails, and then at that point, we'll bring it back and kind of see where we're at. Don't see any more public comment.
Chair, there are no additional comments in our email box either.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes, I would just suggest too, if we are going to come back to a date certain and because SB 9 was brought up, I don't believe it's just the subdividing of the lot. It's also the opportunity to make a duplex on your lot. And so, you know, a portion of your house could, I think, technically be a duplex. So it would be interesting if you're going to look into the ADU, JADU, just see if there's any part of SB 9 that would apply to this. And then I will make a motion to continue this project to a date certain to which, at which point we could get the answers to all of these questions answered. And I'm not sure if there is a date certain that is possible to give the applicant at this point in time that you could share with us.
I don't know if Phil's backed on, but October 12th would be the next Planning Commission meeting that provides ample time, or the following would be the 26th of October.
Does the 12th work for staff to put that together, that response and the updated staff report or feedback?
I think so. Phil?
Yeah, I don't see, foresee any issues with that.
So that'll be included as my date certain.
I would second that, Commissioner Deal.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Daniels and a second by Commissioner Deal. Mr. Spencer, can you take a vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kofelt is absent. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman is absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Molsave?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Still with us. And Chair Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes. The items continue to October 12th.
Perfect. I believe we don't have any more items. This was our last item for today. So I want to thank everybody for the participation today and.
Chair, I think the applicant has a question about.
Well, let's go to the applicant.
Sorry.
My apologies. I just want to be clear on what we're achieving between now and the 12th. And just, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. So I think we are checking to see if you currently require an owner occupancy language or not. I think we would also like to understand if you currently require a separation of an ADU to a main residence. And that is literally it. And I think if we could get those two answers, we could really bring back something very quickly and that you really already understand. So I think that's what we're working on answers for. Is there anything else that stands in anybody's mind that we need to resolve answers on besides those two questions?
Chair, as the maker of the motion, I think we were going to try to answer some of the concerns that were brought up regarding, you know, whether or not you could sell your JADU, which, you know, I don't think is possible, but it would be nice to be able to just answer that question with some certainty.
And then I just want to clarify that we are not asking for a parking variance. We are just asking for administrative permits. So the language keeps being used, so I just want to make sure that we clarify that as well.
Did you get that, Mr. Angelo?
Staff will be reaching out to you directly, the applicant, and we will work with you on trying to figure out how to untangle some of the decision between ADU and JADU and what's required.
We appreciate your patience. We know this is complicated. And I think that there's really very little left to clarify and appreciate us working together to do that, and we will be back on the 12th at some point.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. My call is beginning to adjourn at nine forty. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, very well done.
Thank you.